Call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Current business, first item on the study session, clarification of items on the consent calendar, any comments? Let's move on to the next item, short-term rentals, update and summary of uses in Newport Beach. Staff, do we have a report?
Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon, members of the council, I'm Kim Brant, Community Development Director, and I'm joined here at the staff table by Monique Navarette, who's our business license supervisor. And what we have for you this afternoon is an overview of short-term lodging and how it is currently permitted and or addressed in the city of Newport Beach, and some of the new issues that have arisen primarily through online rental companies which, through the Internet, so I'll go into that a little bit later, but to start off, the city of Newport Beach has had a long history of short-term rentals, and I think that it's very easy to see that many parts of our community were first developed as vacation rentals, and when I say that, I'm thinking of the Balboa Peninsula area, Balboa Island, and Corona del Mar. Short-term rentals are part of the culture of these neighborhoods, and they have been for decades, and they provide a very unique type of lodging experience in that it can, short-term rental can accommodate a large group with a kitchen facility, and so again, it's very convenient for families or large gatherings. And also, the other side of it is that short-term rentals does provide the property owner with a source of income. The city, although it has had short-term rentals in the community for decades, it did not start regulating them until 1992, which at that time, the permit requirement was codified into the municipal code, as well as the requirement to have a business license and to pay transient occupancy tax, the acronym which is the bed tax, or TOT, in case I say that during my presentation. A short-term rental is defined by the number of days of consecutive being used by one rental party, and that's 30 days or less. And again, it requires a permit, and it was in 2004 when the city required or prohibited that short-term rentals could not occur in R1 zoning districts, which are traditional single-family neighborhoods. However, in adopting that code back in 2004, the city council did give recognition to the 211 properties that currently did have short-term lodging permits in the R1 zones, and they were considered grandfathered in. Currently, of those 211 properties, 91 of them have an active short-term lodging permit. And we have an exhibit here that shows where short-term lodging is permitted. The yellow area is the residential areas where you could get a short-term lodging permit, and then the red dots indicate the 211 properties that are grandfathered in, and so those would be in R1 zones, and it's a little hard to distinguish that, given the scale of the map. So how does a person get a short-term lodging permit? First off, they have to be in the correct residential zone within the community, and once that's verified, then they would apply for a short-term lodging permit from the finance department, and they, as well as a business license, and as part of those permits, they would be required to pay transient occupancy tax. And it's important to note that for those people who live within private planned communities that are governed by a homeowners association, they do want to check with their CCNRs to make sure that short-term lodging is not prohibited by those civil regulations. So one of the important aspects of a short-term rental is that it is an alternative vacation lodging within the city of Newport Beach, but we want them on the same playing field with our hotels and motels, and in order to ensure that, they are required to pay the same amount of transient occupancy tax as any of the, as any of the hotel operators or motel operators are required to charge their guests. In the last fiscal year, 2014-15, the total TOT was $2.2 million from the short-term rentals within the city, which represented 9% of the total amount of cities' transient occupancy tax. This graphic does show where the active, the active short-term lodging permits are, and as you can see, it's almost 1,100 permits, and this is a fluctuating number, according to my staff, but this is what, how many permits we had as of January 6th. So I think that previous exhibit made it seem like the entire peninsula or all of Balboa Island has a short-term lodging permit, but I, it's because of the scale of the graphics. So we wanted to provide this graphic that showed you the percentage of the total number of housing units in these defined geographical areas, so that you could see that it's, the highest percentage of the total number of units is Balboa Peninsula, which is at 11% of the total housing units, then followed by Balboa Island, and then the West Newport Shores area, and then Corona del Mar is only 1% of their total housing units. Again, it's the scale of the graphic. Because Balboa Island looks like it's 100% short-term lodging, but that's not the case. And what we've seen is, in the last five years, there has been an increase in the amount of revenue that's been generated from short-term lodging, it's increased by 56%. So there are concerns that are expressed with short-term lodging, vacation rentals, and we, there's been a lot of media attention to this because of the growth of short-term rentals occurring over the Internet, so a lot of other communities are, are just beginning to grapple with some of these impacts, which, or the regulation of these uses, which the city of Newport Beach has already done for decades. But the primary, the primary concern is, wow, this is a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And there's a similar concern that if a property's being used consistently for short-term rentals, it decreases the amount of long-term rental property that may be available within the community. Some of the adverse impacts could be excessive noise, late hours, excessive traffic and parking, and increased traffic generation. And then if we don't have a permit for a short-term rental, then we're concerned about that the transient occupancy tax is not being paid. And then we're also concerned that if the property isn't being properly managed, particularly if there is not a property owner who lives within the community of Newport Beach. So in the city of Newport Beach, there are many properties that are professionally managed, and we do support and encourage professional management of, of short-term rentals, and these management companies do a really good job of minimizing the impact to the community they're there, they usually have rules that are part of their rental agreements with the guests, and then they give, you know, very important information as to who to call in an event of an emergency, or if a waterbait, you know, toilet's overflowing, or some of the common things that could happen in any household. So as I mentioned before, there are now a lot of online companies that are getting into the vacation rental business, and I've just listed three up here on, on your slide, that's Airbnb, FlipKey, and Vacation Rentals BO?
BRBO.
BRBO. I don't know what the BO stands for, never mind, I didn't say.
My owners.
Anyway, and I'm sure there are more than I have listed above. But anyway, we have a more difficult regu, time regulating these businesses, because they don't have a physical presence in the city of Newport Beach. And what we've included here is just a screenshot from the web, from Airbnb's website regarding rentals that are available in the city of Newport Beach. The person goes online, they cruise through the menu of different options available, the price range, and the location, a general location is given, the precise address is not given us on the website, and then they get an idea of if that's what they want to do, and then they contact the person who's listing. So the concern with these Internet companies is, is that sometimes property owners do not know that they have to come into the city to get proper city permits, and that there are city regulations that they need to comply with, and that, and of course, and the secondary issue to that is, then the city isn't collecting the appropriate transient occupancy tax. And also, there are situations where there are tenants who are renting the unit that they're residing in to air, on Airbnb or FlipKey, getting additional income without the knowledge of the property owner, so they're more or less subletting, but they're subletting for vacation rental purposes. As I indicated earlier, these rentals may be occurring in single-family neighborhoods where they're not allowed, and this creates a very large code enforcement concern, and particularly if there's not a professional management company involved, or a property owner in the area. And now there's something new that's come on the scene called home sharing, and typically, when you think of a vacation rental, you think of an entire unit being rented out to, to the guests, but in the concept of home sharing, the, the resident is either renting out a room, or sometimes a portion of a room, it could be even a couch, it's called, you can, people actually list couches. I've, I've gone through some Airbnb websites, and I've seen RVs being parked in the driveway, being rented out, all sorts of configurations of where people can spend the night. Of course, we call this homer sharing in this particular gra, graphic. So that's unusual, and ours, our municipal code doesn't address home sharing for, on a short-term basis. Home sharing would be different if it's being on a long-term tenancy, but on a short-term basis, we don't have any permit regulations set up for that, and of course, we're not then requiring a business license or getting any TOT. But as I mentioned before, many cities are just beginning to grapple with the issue of short-term vacation rentals, whereas the city of Newport Beach has had regulations on the books since 1992. And as with any city regulation, you can have as many regulations on the books, you know, as you want, but enforcement is the important follow-up to ensure that everybody is playing by the same rules. And in the past year, there was a very concerted effort to address these vacation rentals, and there was a seasonal employee who was hired with the, the sole purpose of tracking these down and bringing them into compliance, and based on the numbers up above, over 250 non-compliant listings were found, and when it was all said and done, with the city ended up collecting over $200,000 in fees and TOT as a result of this enforcement effort. Staff has also begun contact with some of the, with Airbnb regarding the short-term rentals, and trying to understand how they, what their business model is, and trying to meld our, our regulations as into their service that they provide to ensure that our regulations are being enforced and complied with when they're doing business in the city of Newport Beach. So what are other coastal cities doing in Orange County? Laguna Beach currently has a moratorium on vacation rentals as they grapple with the regulations. Dana Point allows short-term vacation rentals and mixed use in residential zones. Huntington Beach currently prohibits short-term rentals, and San Clemente is currently amending their regulations. If you've been following some of the media on this topic, you'll note that the Coastal Commission is very supportive of vacation rentals, because they feel it provides access to the coastal zone. So why we brought this topic, topic to you today is, is that we would like some direction from you as to whether or not you're interested in opening up more geographical areas for vacation rentals within the community, adopting regulations for home sharing, whether or not we need to standardize or codify regulations for vacation rentals in terms of the operational guidelines, whether or not we need to dedicate additional resources, staff resources, to enforcement, whether or not we need to pursue agreements with Airbnb, FlipKey, and similar companies, and what other legal options we may wish to pursue in order to address this topic. So I have Monique with me, as well as several other staff members who have been involved in this topic over the last few months, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brant. Mr. Solich, you have a question?
Yeah, there's another concept out there called house swapping, where people just swap their houses for a week or two weeks, no money changes hands, how does that fit in all of this?
At this time, because there's no exchange in revenues, our code doesn't address that, so we're not enforcing any home swapping.
And it's likely that only occurs on, at a very limited time, where they're agreeing to do it between two parties, and it may be, be for two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks, but it's not a constant swapping of the property.
Counsel, any other questions? Any questions? Should we open it up to the public, please? Do we have speakers on this matter? And Mr. Batley, could, are you representing, could you explain who you're representing?
I'm not really representing anybody, I'm just giving some information to council, since my company, Berwatt Realty, has been in this business for 20 years, and I'm just going to add to the staff report here, some information.
And how much time are you asking?
Well, I could give a 30-minute presentation, but if you would let me go about seven minutes, it'd be appreciated. I'm going to skip over half the slides, I, I put a lot of slides in here, so that the city council can review it later.
How many slides do you have?
There's 86.
Oh, my gosh. Can we try to?
We'll skip over most of them.
Move over, let's give it five minutes, and are you representing the complexity of the industry, in a sense of what, what exists in Newport Beach?
Well, yeah, I, what I'm trying to do is give a little bit more of a feeling of what the rental industry has been on the peninsula primarily, that's where almost all, all the activity is, that's where most of the, that's why people come to Newport, is to be at the ocean.
Why don't we go with five minutes and see how you, how fast you can go? Thank you.
Okay, there's a little table of contents. You know, the, the 2004 ordinance was passed for, to, and restricted all the short-term lodging permits, which is part of the problem right now, because a lot of people would probably comply, but they can't get a short-term lodging permit. And as was pointed out, there's about 120 short-term lodging permits that are not even in use right now, that are grandfathered in. So, you know, people have been coming to Newport Beach forever, I mean, if you look at the slides, since 1900, I mean, this is a, something, activity that Newport Beach has offered for years. And quite frankly, the city has done a great job in regulating this overall, and not back in 1992, when they formed these, these regulations and collected tax on it, the city probably manages short-term rentals better than anybody in the county. And right now, the number of short-term lodging permits in R1 zone is frozen at, is the number that you see there, so there can be no more short-term lodging permits allowed on the peninsula, and that's what you see there, and the other slide the city showed, showed 120 not even being used right now. Now, interestingly enough, on the city, over the years, the city has spot-zoned many, many areas in the, in the city, on the peninsula, where is, they have downzoned to R1, so what was previously an R2 property is now an R1 property, and you can have somebody right next door that has a permit, and then somebody adjacent to them does not have one, which causes a little bit of consternation. And this is, occurs in various parts of this, of the peninsula, it's all over the place, there's probably, I'm just guessing, 20, 30, 40 different areas that have little pockets that have been downzoned, and prevents people from getting a short-term lodging permit. Now, Balboa Island has a unique destination where they don't have that problem, because there's zone R, it used to be zone R1 and a half, now they're zone BI, Balboa Island, and they can get short-term lodging permits over there, and as you saw from the map, I mean, they have, they're, they're fully compliant, and if something could be done for the peninsula, they probably comply as, as well. Of course, the Coastal Commission is in total favor of, of access to the beach. And, you know, a lot of people have misconceptions about vacation housing, they, they think of some little rambler, or maybe a boarding house or something, we're talking about multimillion-dollar properties where people pay upwards $15,000 a week, and, and that provides a alternate accommodations for the city. And for 92 years, it was unrestricted, in 24 years, you guys, everybody, the city passed something for the, in 1992, and it's been 12 years, it's been restricted, this is part of the problem, plus the nature of the business has changed so tremendously, because the Internet, you have all these different sites now, and there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of properties listed in Newport Beach. Huntington Beach restricts it, but if you look on these sites, there's hundreds of properties listed in Huntington Beach, there's hundreds of properties in all these coastal cities, and we just need to get a little better handle on it. It does, it does affect property values, because I have people call up and say, can we do a short-term rental, we just bought this property, I say, no, it's zone R1. I have a gentleman right now, who owns a property in the 1900 block on the oceanfront, he's restricted to monthly only. We can rent it monthly onlys, but it just makes it a little more awkward. And right now, if someone calls up and say, I'd like to have a short-term lodging permit, are we grandfathered in? If they've paid TOT tax in the past, they're grandfathered in, even though the property was probably rented many, many times, if there's no record in the city, they can't get one. And of course, the city's losing a lot of revenue. And code enforcement, I mean, it's a, it's a really, it's a really tremendous burden on the city, from a staff standpoint, to enforce this. If, 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 if something could be figured out, you'd have increased revenue, city would get a lot more money, and, and I think the real issue here is, there's a, there's hundreds of people that are cheating and, and collecting revenue, not paying the city, and not, and they're not compliant with the zoning code of the city, the, the regulations. There's the original boardwalk right there in Newport Beach. This is approximately what the city has lost over the years by having that, this restriction in place, this is, this is pretty much just on the R1, this is just R1 restriction, because R2's still been going. And in the future, it's going, it amounts up to a lot of money. And you take a look at the revenue that's generated by vacation rentals, the vacation rental people come to Newport Beach, and they spend a lot of money. I want to get to a, I want to get to a slide, show you something here, you know, there's 900 properties listed on BRBO own. It's a huge industry, it's not going to go away, and, you know, we rent to families, we rent to families only, if you find mostly vacation rentals are not to groups or singles, they're to families, we rent to families only. All right, just one, one more. There's a couple missed, you know, it's, the, I want to show you a slide, you know, here's, here's a slide here, this is, this puts it in perspective, there's nine million people, according to the lifeguard stats, that visit the peninsula every year, mostly in the summer. There's a toll of about 30,000, if you will, vacation rental guests that come down to the peninsula. So when it comes to all these, you know, like, too much trash, too much parking, most, we require parking for every one of our guests, they, you can't even rent a property unless it has parking. So when it comes to the properties, the guests in R1 zone, there's only maybe 3,000 total. So as far as the impact on the peninsula and the city, it's, it's, this is a negligible item. And I, you can go through the rest of the slides, if you have any questions, you can.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, public comments?
Mayor Dixon, and members of the city council, I'm Gary Schoen, the president of Newport Beach and Company, we are your tourism marketing agency, and I am very glad we've reached this day to talk about this issue, I know I've talked with the mayor about it quite a bit, and with, with several of you as well. The genie has been let out of the bottle on the, on the idea of Airbnb and this new concept of online home rentals. Just to give you a sense of how enormous this business has become, Airbnb is the world's largest lodging provider now, they are almost double the size now of Marriott, even with their merging with Starwood, Marriott and Starwood will have about 1.1 million hotel rooms worldwide. Airbnb now has over 2 million lodging properties available worldwide, that shows you how big it is. Airbnb, in 2009, had 21,000 guests a year, this year, they will have over 40 million guests worldwide. There are over 2 million listings right now on Airbnb, and as of a check earlier today, Newport Beach has about 300 of those listings. During the summer last year, we surged to about 1,000 listings. And again, I don't know if all of these are properly zoned, I don't know how many of them have permits, we just know that there are a lot of people getting into this business here in, in the city. Airbnb is in 34,000 cities, 191 countries, and about 90% of the Airbnb users are leisure guests, now even 10% of them are now business travelers using Airbnb. The average length of stay for an Airbnb guest is about 4.1 nights, so they do stay for a fairly long length of time. This is, again, worldwide, this is not just Newport Beach. A number of cities are trying to get a handle on this, San Francisco is probably most noteworthy, where they have actually been able to find a way to tax and regulate it, and now even the tourism operation up there is promoting Airbnb as a lodging option up in San Francisco. My real issue here is that this is a, I think, significant issue in this city, where a lot of people are getting involved in this. My feeling is that we need to not only regulate it, but create a sense of fairness among all the lodging providers, both those that are already in the business, like Craig Batley's company, as well as the hotels. I know there are a number of very complex issues here, we're talking zonings, we're talking quality of life for the residents, all of those things need to be taken into consideration. I, I'm more than willing to work with you in any way in providing resources, or participating in any working group that you choose to try to explore this issue a little bit further, I just think that this is something that this city really needs to take a close look at, not only for the fairness issue, but I do think the city is foregoing a significant amount of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor Dixon, and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser, I had two very brief, and I think obvious, questions to ask. We're concerned here about people renting their rooms over the Internet, so I was wondering if someone in Newport Beach wanted to do the right thing, and apply for a short-term lodging permit, and pay their tax, where on our own city website would they find how they go about doing the right thing? While our director was speaking, I tried to find that, and I was unable to. And then on the flip side of that, if a resident of Newport Beach thought they were observing unpermitted activity, how they, how do they determine if a person has a valid permit, or has one of these grandfathered ones that's not being used? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Lisa Oberman, good evening, mayor, council members. I am here on my own behalf as an oceanfront resident in a residential community area of the Balboa Peninsula, which Mr. Craig Batley seems to think that there aren't any residential neighborhoods on the Balboa Peninsula, it's all visitors, but I assure you, that's not the case. I've also been asked by the Central Peninsula Newport Association, Community Association Board, to just make some brief talking points, we didn't have a chance to research all the facts, and they did want me to bring certain points to the council, so I need about five minutes, if that would be acceptable. I am representing the Board of the Central Peninsula Community Association, Scott Robinson, the president was unable to come due to business commitment. So, the first point is, we agree this is a complex issue, and the first request of the Board on behalf of the community is that the council not draw any conclusions tonight, but they direct staff to gather some additional facts, because Gary Sherwin very succinctly pointed out, there are zoning issues, there are quality of life issues, there are management and enforcement issues. Craig Batley did point out, and we agree, that there is a substitution occurring in the business of vacation rentals, and the city does need to figure out a way to regulate that in an orderly manner. So the association appreciates the city's desire to maximize its revenues for short-term rentals, but not at the expense of forfeiting quality of life of the residential communities. There are some very vibrant residential neighborhoods in the Balboa Peninsula. in the Balboa Peninsula, the greater area, going from West Newport down the peninsula to Peninsula Point. We've got an elementary school. There are people that actually live there, that work, and have their families conducting their personal life and their civic life in that area of Newport Beach, as well as some other coastal zones. So the association feels it is important to take into account the residents' position in preserving the integrity and finding a solution that provides for a legitimate balance between vacation rentals and the sustainable community. So that's one position request that the association has. The other is, and that is a delicate balance, so the association respectfully requests that the council do that in a thoughtful manner. On the Balboa Peninsula, and staff has rightly pointed out and well illustrated the fact that there is a high concentration currently of short-term lodging permits, and those are just units that we know of from the traditional methods. As with any other type of high levels of concentration, it puts a burden on the community as well as the city, on the community to tolerate the impact that the high concentration creates. And there are, not perceived, but real adverse impacts that are associated with concentration. One short-term lodging doesn't hurt when you have 10 interspersed with 10 other regular family residents. There is a material impact. It does alter the quality of life in an area that's already a very dense, intense residential use. So it has to be approached, again, with care and not just dumping by permitting additional units. The association feels just doing that without careful consideration about where additional units may be located if they are permitted, where they are, so as not to contribute to an over-concentrated state that will alter the integrity of the residential community that exists there. So there's an appropriate balance. So that's another point. So we ask that, if you look at the map, and I don't know, Kim, whether you can readily put up the map. I believe it's on page seven of your presentation. If not, it doesn't matter. So the Balboa Peninsula holds about 10% of the active units. Balboa Peninsula and the West Newport area holds in total about 15% of the total, excuse me, about 70% of the total currently available active permits. So there could be no doubt there is a concentration. There is also a concentration on Balboa Island, and we aren't in a position to comment on that. So we have three very simple requests. One is that the council not draw any conclusions as to tonight, as to whether or not there should be more units to come into the Balboa Peninsula. The related request is that the council not allow any more total available units to come into the Balboa Peninsula. There's already more than our fair share of short-term lodgings. And the association is willing and able to help to facilitate the proper kind of fact gathering and also really take a thoughtful look at other cities as to their characteristics. Where are they truly comparable to Newport Beach in terms of the physical characteristics, the already existing intensity of uses, what is the demographic and the volume of the visitor base? To put 92 years ago up on a screen and to say, we've always done something for 92 years. Well, the reality is, we are a long ways away from what Newport Beach was 92 years ago. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Todd Priest, and I live in Corona del Mar. And we've been living with this issue for about four years. We bought our home probably 16 years ago, and the sad thing is, I wish I could come tonight and say, here's the solution. Here's the answer. As somebody that's lived with it for four years, we've struggled to figure out what the answer is and what the solution is. But I did want to at least share our experience, but at the same time, I wanted to thank staff and the police department, the fire department. They have always been out there trying to do what's right. They're always trying to figure out how they protect our quality of life. But when you hear the situation, you'll kind of scratch your head and go, yeah, how do we figure this out? So the home next to ours decided to start renting it out, and they were doing that for just the weekends, and then it became a full-time short-term rental. And when they realized that they could no longer do that, the city started enforcing the restrictions, which was great. And I think eventually actually took them to court and won. But the issue is, even if you're not zoned for a short-term rental, there's bad people out there, and they're going to figure out how to make money off of their home. So, for example, every weekend when people show up to stay in the house next to us, they're very well-coached. We greet them all, and they all tell us, oh, hi, we're cousins. So they're staying with their family. Oh, and we're staying for 31 days. So those are the first two things out of their mouth every time we greet them. We're staying for 32 days, and we're cousins. So I think we know where the bad operators are. I think you probably know where the good operators are as well. So I just hope in your discussion, you can figure out, how do you make the hammer hard enough to where these good operators go away? For example, I know the house next to ours, they were renting it for 15,000 a week. Some pretty good money. You go out and you, you know, fine them $500. They really don't care. So if we can come up with some penalties that'll actually get these people's attention, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Abrams. My business is Abrams Coastal Properties. We're on Balboa Island, and we just manage properties on the island. We don't manage vacation rentals anywhere else. And I'd like to thank your staff. I thought the report was excellent, covered all the areas and issues. I thought the map was very effective. The vacation rental model works very well on Balboa Island. Although it's dense, there are management companies like ours. The tenants get a three-page list of rules and regulations. If they want to ever come back and stay at one of our properties again, they follow all those regulations, or else they're not allowed to stay with us the next year. So everyone follows the rules. The homes are taken care of very well. We have a staff that looks at the house before they come in and after they come in. We have no complaints from the residents. And so this is a model that works well on Balboa Island. I was also very impressed that you hired a summer worker who got $202,000 for the city. I mean, if we could, any of us could hire somebody like that to work for us, I think that was a great effort. And I think the city can do more of that. I think all of us in the rental management business are concerned about particularly the Airbnb. It seems like it's an unregulated business. They let people stay in the house for a weekend or three or four days. We have a minimum rental of a week, which is a good model. It keeps down people who are just moving in, moving out, creating an uproar, and that might be a standard. You might want to consider something like that. That's pretty much what I wanted to say, other than I think we'd be willing to serve on a committee, if you want to have a committee of property managers or others to help you come up with any regulations. I think this is a good effort. I do think the Airbnb needs to be looked at and more closely regulated. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Mr. Abrams?
I did. What are some of those regulations that you hand out to your tenants or your visitors?
I wish we had brought it, but we have a list of how many beds, how many bathrooms are in the house, how many guests will be staying. No more than the amount, if there are beds for six people, only six guests can be there. No smoking, no pets, furniture may not be moved, no loud parties. The person signing the lease must be over 25. I don't think we've ever rented knowingly to a group. We only rent to families. I don't know if that's a legal standard, but that's what we're looking for. But we'd be happy to provide you or the staff with some excerpts from our leases, but it's quite detailed. We actually find that our vacation rentals seem to be kept better than the yearly rentals, because in the vacation rental, we have seven different maid services, and they're in there every single week. And when we rent the house to somebody for a year, we get it back a year later, and if they were great housekeepers, it was kept well. And if they weren't, sometimes the house needs a remodel. Vacation rentals, anytime you go there, they look great. But we stay on it. I've got a paid staff of four people, and that's all they do is stay on top of vacation rentals.
Madam Mayor, another question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Abrams, where do you advertise for your clients' vacation rentals?
That's a good question. On our website, heavily on our website. Lots of word of mouth. Our windows, we have a flyer, that's a flyer box outside that's heavily picked up. A few of our homes are listed through vacation rentals by owner, which is an interesting site. Vacation rental by owner can be used by an individual homeowner, but it can also be used by a professional management company. And some of our owners like us, our owners subscribe to that, and then when they get guests who are interested, they'll send the guests to us. But this doesn't seem like a predatory company, and I don't want to categorize Airbnb, but it just seems like an unregulated force.
Okay, but you do advertise at least some of your facilities on BRBO?
Yeah, our owners do.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Abrams, I have a question. In Kim's map of showing the heavy concentration intensity on Balboa Island of permitted rentals, is that correct? Okay, so you are one of the larger providers or managers of those properties. Have you seen any impact? Here, there are permitted rentals, so these permitted residence owners could be going directly through Airbnb. And then are we collecting those revenues if they're doing that? So my question is, have you seen any impact in your business where you have your client residential homes going now skipping you and going directly to Airbnb? Can you quantify that?
I can't. I have a feeling, I know there are some on the island. I've looked on these different websites, and I know there are some, and my guess is they're not paying the TOT, and obviously, they're not paying us either. But I couldn't quantify it. I don't know if there's 10 or 100.
So would there be, Kim, conceivably, homes that are being rented with a permit but not paying the TOT?
Not if they have a permit, because we would be tracking their TOT payments. And I'll let Monique address in terms of how you follow up on that.
Right. As long as they have a permit, your staff here collects the money. I don't think that's a problem. The problem is people who don't apply for the permit are under the radar. That could be anywhere in the city. That could even be in these R1 zones, where they know they can't get a permit, so they're doing it that way.
Did you want to comment, Monique?
Yeah, so we just wanted to let you know that if a homeowner chooses to hire an agent and also do their own advertisement, then the agent is responsible to remit the TOT on a quarterly basis, and then the owner also gets their own reporting form once a year.
I see.
So we try to collect from both.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is George Schroeder, and I've lived on the 100 block of 35th Street since 1987, so I'm kind of just right down there where all the rentals are for about the last 28, 29 years. I just want to say, on the two items, on the Airbnb and the short-term new product like that, just like Gary Sherwin, I'm quite concerned about that. I do feel it's kind of like an end run around what our great hotels do. They provide a place where people can come and stay. I think probably the majority of the people staying in those rooms are probably people that could afford to stay and would be staying at a hotel, but instead, they're saving 20% or 30%. And then, so I do think you should look at some kind of way to get TOT on that. And then I feel this is a situation kind of like in the 1990s, when somebody wanted to lease an apartment for a year and pay it upfront. They were going to be a group home. We weren't too concerned about group homes in the 1990s, but then we had to get regulations to clean it up. So I do think we may not do a regulation for problems that don't exist now, but problems are going to come, and we'll be doing regulations to clean them up. So we need to keep looking at that. Quickly, on the short-term rentals we have now. In 1992, I was here, and there's a reason that happened, okay? It happened because there were serious issues with the residents in the way their short-term rentals were being managed, or how the people who were staying in them were behaving. And it isn't so much the families that come during the summertime. It's more the people that rent them during the off-season, the winter rentals. We get primarily a lot of young UCI students down here. On my block, there's 10 properties, on one side 10, on the other side of the 20 properties, probably five or six of them are short-term. If you look at the police calls, the majority of the police calls go to the winter rentals with the UCI students. You know, when I was young, 20, 21 years old, I kind of had an attitude problem. You look at my driving tickets then versus now, you know, I was more of a scofflaw, okay? I may be deemed a scofflaw now, but I don't have a rest record like I had back then. So the point is, most residents who bought oceanfront properties in the last 20, 25 years, when I show them, they say, okay, if I buy this own property and live here, George, will I be next to a weekly rental? I tell them, no. I point across the alley in the back, I go, those on the side streets, those can be. But at least next door to you, you won't have people down here to have a party for a week. Or during the winter, you won't have young people staying here that have to be out June 1st that have a big party the weekend before. Lugo has cleaned that up a lot. I've made my peace with the short-term property owners, management, they're doing a very good job. I don't get hardly any complaints from the residents in the area, because it seems to be working okay. But any change to open it up to R1, down on the point, all over town, you would have a lot of R2 property owners in here quite upset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Connie Adnoff, and I am a property owner of a vacation rental on the peninsula. I live on the peninsula, and then I own a property management company that primarily manages vacation rentals on the peninsula. So I can look at this issue several different ways, and I would love to join Don and any others who would like to offer our input on any further information in this area. I have found over the years, and I've been here for 57 years, my whole life, and what I observe is that it is, there are more problems with the long-term renters than there are whether they're a yearly lease or, as George has just said, with the nine-month lease, who are usually students, college students. And that's, those are usually the ones that we're having to calm down ourselves, or my son told me, Mom, you can't go blasting into those places anymore because you're going to get in trouble. So that's where the wonderful police department, it's 644-3717, get on over here and help us out. And we tell our vacationers to do likewise. Well, and the benefit of the short-term lodging guests, they are guests, and legally, as guests, we can kick them out immediately if there are any behavioral issues or anything that is impacting the neighborhood. Our company, Beachview Realty, has a six-page list of rules, and we get teased all the time because it's just so long, and people are intimidated. But I like to tell them, that's because I live here. That's because I care. That's because this place should not be a multimillion-dollar ghetto by people who don't care. And our job is to make sure that people care for our neighborhood, for the regular residents, but then for the vacationers that are here, and that we can, you know, cohabitate in consideration of each other. Anyhow, with long-term tenants, you are not allowed to kick them out immediately. It's a long, long, difficult process. And that's the demographic, that's the quadrant that I feel is very difficult and is not being managed properly, that are very problematic with the ongoing daily hooting and hollering and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up, because it's not just the vacation rentals that are potentially bringing issues. It's the long-term rentals. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor Dixon, Art White, White Sailor City Council, Mayor Dixon, Art White, White Cellar Realty. Just two quick points. First, I wanted to agree with Craig, Dawn, and Connie as far as just their general points. But specifically, as time permits, I definitely recommend that you look at Craig's slides, go over them. It's a lot of good background information and, you know, like I said, as time permits, definitely worth your time. On the subject of Airbnb and enforcement in general, people that go around the system are undercutting not only the city's revenues, but also the revenues of actual legitimate business. You basically have a 10% advantage. So that $200,000 you collected not only basically remits to the city, but also helps everyone else kind of have a level playing field. So we definitely like that. Additionally, I was recently at a luncheon hosted by Airbnb. And one of their intents going forward is to actually negotiate with the different cities they work in. They haven't traditionally been a vacation rental market. They've usually been more of like a renting out a room, renting out a couch. Going forward, they've looked and decided that vacation rental managers specifically get much better reviews. So rather than have to deal with some, you know, random homeowner in a random city, you actually have people that have professionally done this for decades. So just for their business model, they've decided that's how they want to go forward. Something I'd recommend when you actually go do to deal with them, even though you can't see the addresses online, just to go on Airbnb and look, you have to submit those addresses to the companies, to VRBO, to Airbnb. So if it gets to the point where you're actually negotiating with representatives from these companies, perhaps getting them to release their lists of address by address whose advertising your city could be a good way to facilitate enforcement.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments? No? Why don't we bring it back up here? Mr. Pedros.
Mayor Dixon, thank you, Steph, for a very informative presentation. And I'm most impressed by the comments that we received from the professionals out there who are doing this day in and day out. I think that a comment was made that the genie's out of the bottle. And I appreciate that, Gary. I think that that is in fact the truth. Having said that, though, I'm impressed by the question of fairness and equity in this whole discussion. We're not going to make this go away. It is here to stay. And it is really now a question of how do we level the playing field for all of our hospitality and vacation rentals throughout the city? And the thing that I am impressed with, having just heard this discussion, is we don't have to look far to get local, professional advice on this. And it would be my hope that this council would tap into the professionals that we've just heard from and maybe consider seating a committee that would be comprised of members of vacation rental associations, Visit Newport, homeowners association, our city attorney's office, and the community development. So that we get good localized knowledge from the people who are invested in this on what constitutes the foundation and the playing field as we know it today, and what tools are available out there in our local fields to make everybody play accordingly.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Mr. Pieter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kiff, can you explain a little bit, or Kim, or whoever it's appropriate to, what Airbnb has been required to do by the city of San Francisco?
Well, as we understand it, and Aaron or Kim could chime in, Mr. Pieter, that they were able to reach an agreement with the city of San Francisco to collect the TOT for Airbnb rentals.
And that goes for VRBO as well? And some of the other agencies?
I don't know if they reached a deal with VRBO, but I know they have reached a deal with Airbnb and they're collecting the 14% tax for San Francisco. And typically, based on our discussions with Airbnb, is that if the cities are willing to open up the areas where Airbnb is allowed, they've shown some willingness to collect the tax on behalf of the cities and remit that to the cities.
Wasn't there also that we, or that the city of San Francisco wanted to get information back from Airbnb as far as where their customers are as part of that arrangement?
Yes, there's been several cities that have requested that from Airbnb. And from our understanding, is that Airbnb at this time will not release the property addresses unless there's some type of litigation that the municipality starts. The only one that we are aware of at this time right now is the state of New York did sue Airbnb for the property listings. And they were granted the addresses for only a minimal amount of time to reconcile against their data that they had. So the Airbnb, specifically Airbnb, is willing to collect the TOT, however, without releasing the property owner's information.
So it's likely that we could do a deal with Airbnb, that we could have them collect the TOT tax. They would not give up their clients' addresses, we wouldn't give up or expand the areas that we allow vacation rentals. Is that accurate?
Right now, that is accurate. And that's, we've been in very brief discussions with Airbnb, and they've indicated that that is what they're doing for cities. They haven't agreed to do that with the city of Newport Beach yet. We've sent, they have sent us some examples of voluntary agreements that we could review, but they haven't agreed to collect for Newport. It was just a brief discussion and what they could be, what they would be willing to do for us.
And I know you had an intern chasing Airbnb and some of the other ones this summer. Do you have a reasonable estimate as to the amount of TOT taxes that are not being paid? Or let's say, total amount of TOT taxes that would really be due based on all of these Airbnb, VRBO, all these guys? Forget collect or not collect, just what should we be collecting if they were all to pay?
This is a rough estimate. I estimated at the, TOT for owners are due every October 31st. So when this was originally guesstimated, I guesstimated that the city would come in at about $150,000 out of the TOT. To date, right now, we're at $234,000. We have some properties that are just slowly remitting their TOT. So we have, you know, a very rough estimate. We still have probably another $100,000 out there that we need to have.
That's based on what you know about, but how many Airbnb and VRBOs are there out there that we don't know about?
Well, the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, it's a little tricky. So like you have heard from some of the speakers, we might have 900 listings in the city of Newport Beach, but some owners will advertise three different times with three different pictures. So it's not necessarily that we have 900, maybe we have 800. It's they choose to put multiple listings up there.
So Councilmember Pieter, we don't have an estimate, I think, of what our lost revenue is at this point due to these online services. But it's fair to say that it's substantial.
One question for Monique, though. What was the time period that that amount, that $220,000 represents? Is that a quarter of a year or a half a year, or you're saying it's a full year?
Right now, it'd be for a year. What we have found is that there were owners identified that had been doing it for multiple years. So they were honest in turning in their information to us, saying that they had been doing it for three to four years. So TOT is due for those back years. But this is only for the one-year period from September of 2000, and September 30th, 2014, to October 30th, 2015.
So conceivably, we could be losing, we know of 250,000, we could be losing $1 million a year, well, let's say 750,000 that we're not collecting. I mean, are we in the ballpark?
Yeah, that's definitely a possibility.
So one of the big issues here is a level playing field. You have these guys that go and play by the rules, they get the permit required, they pay their TOT, and then you have the Airbnb, VRBO guys, three-quarters of which maybe or more, who knows, aren't paying that tax. So it's not a level playing field. And as Visit Newport Beach, as Gary Sherwin pointed out, they're actually, they have more rooms and more stays than any other hotel chain that's out there. They're the largest guy out there now. So for them not to be on the same level playing field is an issue. And I think that's part of the reason why we're looking at the study session. Question for you, how much is the permit for the short-term rental units?
It's $153, one-time fee.
One-time fee. And that's really just to verify zoning then, to make sure that they're in the right zone?
Yeah, it's the permitting process. We verify the zoning and get the account set up so that it could be properly identified and submit the invoices for the TOTs that are due.
So if it's a, my comments are, if it's a doable deal, I don't want to give up our information or expand our area to Airbnb or any of these other guys. I want to keep it as we've got our ordinance now. But I would like to have it be a level playing field. So if there would be a way that anybody that goes with the big guys, Airbnb, VRBO, you know, Home Trade or whatever those issues are, if there's a way that we can do an arrangement with them where they collect our TOT tax for us, so that we're not getting these things fall through the cracks, except for the small, little off-brand sites, so to speak, it seems to me that we're creating a level playing field and then we just let our ordinances speak for themselves when we get complaints, et cetera, on code enforcement. If somebody's operating in Airbnb where they're not supposed to, then we can come down on them. But it seems to me that a level playing field is an important aspect to this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Teut.
Just to follow up to Councilman Pieter's questions, did I understand you to say that in your discussions with Airbnb, they're willing to respect our ordinance as it is now?
No, that's, and Aaron and Dan could chime in, but we understand that they've said, we'll collect your TOT like you want us to, but only if you open up more of the controlled areas, the R1, to their potential clients.
So that's the only way they'll make a deal now?
Well, that's what they're saying to us. Arguably, we could go through litigation with them to try and prompt it. I don't know, Dan, if you have a, you're standing up, so you must have a perspective on it.
The other item, they won't necessarily, they'll agree to collect, but they're not going to, they won't validate that the rental is in a valid zone. So they won't enforce our TOT. They'll enter into a voluntary collection agreement for us, but make no guarantees that they're in an eligible zone.
When you say voluntary, you mean voluntary on the part of the property owner and not Airbnb? Who's the volunteer here?
I think, before you go, Dan, I think we have a diverse of opinion here in front of everyone.
Just briefly, and maybe Mr. Torres can step up to the mic because he was actually part of the negotiations, but my understanding is that they are not willing to collect the tax unless we're willing to loosen up the regulations. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Torres at this point.
That's correct. So negotiate. Michael Torres with the city attorney's office. Negotiating with Airbnb is a very difficult proposition. They come from the perspective that they don't have to give us anything or comply with our laws, and it's the city's ability or responsibility to enforce our own laws. So as far as the voluntary TOT collection, they are willing to do that, but it's a tit-for-tat arrangement. At least that's what they presented it. So in just putting it out there, they said, if you want us to collect it, what are you going to do for us? And what we could do for them is open up additional areas of the city. If we don't do that, then they say we are a low priority and they're not interested in collecting TOT on our behalf. And as part of the TOT agreement they sent to us, it's very one-sided. So there's no audit rights, there's no ability to see who's actually using the service, whether they're in an R1 zone, or if they do have a current short-term permit at this time. So it's very one-sided in their favor. They're willing to do something for us if we do something for them, but it's very limited.
And just to add on to that, I mean, some jurisdictions have been successful getting the information by initiating litigation. So that is kind of the flip side of the coin if you can't get it voluntarily.
And they actually said that during the call, when we asked for their information, they said, well, if you want that, you should sue us.
Well, I think, I think that in the instances where they've been sued, though, that the information has been limited. It's not like they get an all-encompassing database. It's very limited, depending on certain criteria that's dealing with whatever the litigation is. So it's not open access to their database. And Santa Monica, as was pointed out, has banned short-term rentals completely, but I'm just wondering how successful they are in enforcing it. And I know that some cities have tried to enforce bans, or not bans, but collecting TOT taxes on Airbnb types of operations. And I know that, you know, we made a profit on ours, but I'm guessing we got the low-hanging fruit on that one. But I know some cities that are trying to do this, they're actually spending more money trying to collect, because of the nature of the internet, trying to collect the tax than the amount of increased taxes they're collecting. So if we're thinking of going down that direction, we ought to think pretty hard about that, whether it's going to be worth the, be worth the effort. I mean, I think like Councilman Pieter said, if you can get these internet companies to agree to some agreement with the city, it honors our zoning codes and that'd be the perfect thing to do. But I think, you know, just from what I'm seeing out there in the lay of the land and how all these other jurisdictions are dealing with these companies, we're pretty far away from achieving that.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand, could you put back up the next steps? Trying to make it easy for you. No, yes, not sure. No, not yet. Yes, yes.
You say that one more time.
Yes. No, yes, not sure. No, not yet, for the reason Salas just said. Yes.
That's correct.
Yes and yes.
Does everybody understand that? Okay. All right. Is that it? Mr. Curry.
Well, one thing is clear, is that this is sort of the wave of the future in terms of the way people travel. And I think we need to be a part of the solution for this and part of making sure that it fits comfortably in our community. Newport Beach has been a vacation rental community since the beginning. We have a well-established infrastructure and industry here, people who are operators and managers who collect this. We ought to draw on that expertise. As for the geographic areas, I think the point that Mr. Batley was going to make before he got cut off, is that we have a lot of R1, R2 homes mixed up amongst themselves, sometimes on the same block, some of whom have different property rights than others. And so I think we ought to take a look at that. It may not be rational, because it diminishes that person's property values, not to be able to have the same right to rent that his neighbor has. And so we need to look at that and see if there's not an accommodation that we could make that would make common sense. And I really think what we ought to do is work with the experienced property managers that we have to work collaboratively with Airbnb and these other companies, and let's find a solution that works. I had an opportunity to talk to Mayor Ed Lee personally in San Francisco about this, and he's very optimistic about what the impact of this in San Francisco. But whether we're optimistic about it or not, it's going to happen. And so we need to have a framework and a context to have it happen in our city, minimizes the impacts on neighbors, but also maximizes property values, individuals' property rights. The attractiveness of this community is a place for people to come, the desirability of the kind of people we want to come stay here, and I agree with the speakers. The real issue that we have on the peninsula and in other places are not short-term vacation renters who come for a week or a weekend. It's people who come as students and they come for a semester, or they come for six months, or they come for the entire summer, and it's a party house. And that's really not what we're talking about here. It's important for people to understand that. So those would be my comments. I think I'd be a little bit more flexible, maybe than Mr. Muldoon, in terms of some of these items. But I think we need to move forward in all of these. And the same thing with home sharing. If somebody's renting a room in their house, I think that's going to be a major subcomponent of this market going forward as well.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have asked this a long time ago. I feel stupid asking it, but I'm going to make an idiot of myself. Anyway, I just want to know what the disparity is. If I go with Dawn with my house, or I go with the other folks, can you tell me percentage-wise, somebody, how much, what, how much more it costs with Dawn, or are you less? Is it the same in terms of what they charge? I've never known what they charge. I don't use them, so I don't know. How do they, is it a lot cheaper to go with this other, with the Airbnb? Like 100% cheaper or what?
If Dawn wants to tell what the management fee is, I mean, he may not. But it's at least 10%. Because one of the clients, the Airbnb group, they're not paying a room tax on a $175 a night rental where they are with Dawn. Dawn's collecting that.
I didn't mean to bring in the tax part. I'm just saying legit to legit. To legit.
Is that a fair assertion, Dawn, that it's at least 10%?
I don't know what they charge either.
Yeah. Sorry, Monique knows, but...
The answer to that question is that these other sites charge a flat fee, it's an annual subscription fee. So it's got nothing to do with the percentage.
Wow. Well, the point I'm trying to get at is if it's, if the disparity is really great, I would hope that we can negotiate that down. Because obviously, if you were a property owner, you would, to motivate you to be legit, you'd want to have it level... a property owner, you would, to motivate you to be legit, you'd want to have a level, at least a closer level field in that vicinity as well, I would think, not just legally and all of the other things. Because if it's a huge disparity, I mean, why would they ever do it? You know, I don't know.
Mr. Piattar.
Just point of clarification. I would love it if we can do a deal. I mean, to me, collecting the TOT is 90% of the problem, and the use in the areas are, I would guess Marketplace is going to, more or less, either the CCNRs and the Marketplace will correct rentals that shouldn't be where they should have rentals, and they'll be few and far between. So I'd have no objection doing a deal with Airbnb where we don't give them anything, they don't give us anything, they just collect the TOT. We don't give them data, they don't give us data. Just give us the TOT, have them collect it for us. For everybody in the city limits, unvoluntarily, anything that's leased, they would write us a check.
Kim or Monique, my understanding is that Airbnb doesn't operate that way. They're under no compulsion to turn over the TOT?
So maybe I could address that, Mayor Dixon. Under our municipal code, we have a pretty broad definition of what an operator is, and operator is charged with collecting that TOT. And Airbnb is unique because they actually facilitate the exchange. So you enter your credit card information through their website, and that's then transmitted from Airbnb down to the homeowner to the property management company. Whereas a VRBO, it just sets up the exchange, but the money is actually transferred between the person renting the house and the person that's holding the house out to rent. So under our definitions and our municipal code and our interpretation, we think Airbnb actually is an operator, and they are required to collect that TOT. And we've told Airbnb that, and they're mulling it over. They don't want to recognize it. So as part of the agreement they actually sent us, it had a carve-out to say, "We might give you the money, but we're not saying we're an operator, but we may give you the money."
He said sue us.
And they also told us to sue them, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's something that, you know, we're going to continue negotiations with them. I don't think they've given us a final position on it, so we are still engaged in that process and, and trying to work with them.
That's correct.
Mr. Petros.
I just would come back to the notion that this, that, that TOT is important for the city and the city coffers, I get that. But that seems to be only one issue that I've heard the community speak to. So again, I would just encourage us to take advantage of the expertise that's out in our community, find out what the, what defines a level playing field, and come back with some recommendations. We may accept them, we may not, but at least let's, you know, take advantage of, of what we have out there in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Saj.
I've got a question for Councilman Piattar. Were you suggesting that we reach a deal with Airbnb where they collect the TOT in our permit areas, but let them operate as normal in the non-permit areas?
My suggestion would be is that anybody that does an Airbnb deal in the city of Newport Beach, they would collect the TOT tax and remit it to us. And they wouldn't worry about permits, we wouldn't exchange data, it would be just, they collect all the money for anybody that stays for Airbnb, just like when you pay your hotel bill, you, you pay your TOT tax at that time, have Airbnb do that for us.
So for that purpose, we wouldn't care whether they were legally permitted or not?
Right, then we would go on complaints and other things that we do when we find other zoning violations. We continue to enforce our zoning laws that way. But we wouldn't require a, a short-term renting agreement or anything else. It's just anything that was Airbnb, they collect the tax.
Any other comments from council staff?
Why don't we, as it's been suggested, have some staff community activity workshop to do more fact-finding, work with the residential groups, the short-term group, rental groups as well, and get as much community buy-in on this? I think it's also important to hear from the neighborhood, Resident Homeowners Association in these targeted areas, because as we're all reading, there are impacts on neighbors in, particularly in other cities, and necessarily haven't heard it here, that homes suddenly become, private homes suddenly become dormitories, and, and it's just, it's out of control. So I think talking to the homeowner associations, the real estate, short-term rental groups, staff, city attorney, just as Mr. Petros has suggested. And Mr. Kiff, when do you think you could come back with a recommendation and report on what we should do?
About six months. Okay. I, I guess I'd step my toe maybe where it shouldn't be, but one, one of the things that Mr. Muldoon mentioned, I think, is going to be a critical discussion for those workshops, and that is whether or not to open up new areas. Mr. Piattar's concept was the new areas could be open, but we, none of us would really know about it. Do, do any of the others of you feel strongly that new areas should be on the table or off the table? And that, I think that helps the workshop effort a little bit more.
I know what you're.
You could also remain silent.
Well, I was gonna say, new areas should be off the table, but like Mr. Curry pointed out, there may be some inconsistencies in the way that we're applying the code now that those types of things ought to be looked at.
Okay.
Is there, so there's a consensus up here that we do not want to expand the permitted areas, and we're, we're capping the.
Okay, that helps, all right.
I'm just restating, is that what we're all agreeing, and capping the number that we're currently capped at? Is that correct? Am I saying?
Where Scott and I were agreeing is that you have neighborhoods where one house is an R2 and the house next door is an R1. So under the current rules, one guy can rent and the other guy can't. And then the guy next door is an R2, so he can rent. So when you say open up the areas, or if we're talking about geographic areas, maybe we want to think very carefully about that. If we're talking about you want to make the guy's house in the middle, give him the right to do it, that's a different thing.
Well, that's a very good point. I interpret when we say open up is we have a, a finite number of permits permitted, correct? And that's in the defined areas as we've, are we talking about going beyond the capped permits and going beyond the geographic areas?
We only have a finite number for those that are grandfathered into R1 areas. Anybody that's in an R2 can pull a permit tomorrow and, and open it up. So in that sense, the number isn't capped. What, where Mr. Curry and I are talking about is there are some weird inconsistencies in, because we've got zoning where you've got R1s and R2s next to each other, or sites that it's split lots, and now they're two R1s rather than one R2, that, and we ought to look at maybe in a working group where you could evaluate expanding the R1s to, because of those circumstances.
Unify or, all right.
Yeah, I'd support, I'd support doing that. I think that makes sense.
All right, I see enough heads nodding. Mr. Muldoon, are you comfortable with that, minor?
I am holding my ground.
All right, all right.
But I respect my colleagues.
All right, thank you. I think we have enough, do we have enough guidance, folks?
All right, well, thank you, thank you, staff, for a good discussion. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I wanted to call your attention to closed session item A, in which you'll be conducting a performance evaluation of three of our key city employees, something that the Brown Act allows but does not require you to do behind closed doors. Main reason I wanted to mention this is two evenings from now, I expect to be at a board meeting in the Costa Mesa Sanitary District where item 16 on their agenda will be a review of their general manager's performance for the last calendar year. And what I wanted to point out is unlike in Newport Beach, that will be an open public discussion of the 11 goals that were set for their general manager last year, eight of which it looks like he achieved, and three of which he had a little trouble with. I think the public discussion of the goals and the impediments to reaching them is a very healthy thing for a public agency to do. So I'm not sure why in Newport Beach we want to keep the public in the dark as to what our expectations are for our key employees and whether they've been met. Beyond that, I wanted to emphasize for you that the title of the agenda item is public employee performance evaluation. Although we have delegated to you the responsibility and authority to hire, fire, and set compensation for these three employees, who they really work for is the public. And as our representatives, I would think that you would want your evaluation very much to be influenced and shaped by what the public thinks about their performance and how the public thinks they've been served by the employees. I realize you have very little time for these evaluations tonight, but I don't think you're going to discover what the public thinks behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss agenda item 4A and B, including meaning to discuss the performance of Dave Kiff, city manager, Aaron Harp, city attorney, and Lonnie Brown, city clerk, as well as the existing litigation titled Paul Deem versus State of California in the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present at the meeting.
Thank you. May we have the closed session report, please?
Yes, we have a brief closed session report this evening in regards to closed session item 4B, Paul Deem versus the State of California in the city of Newport Beach. Mayor Protem Muldoon and Councilmember Petros recuse themselves from hearing that item based on a potential conflict of interest related to source of income. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Mayor Protem Muldoon, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by Dr. Jim Terrell of the Center for Spiritual Living in Newport Mesa?
However you know God to be in your heart, bring that forth now, and let us together bless this meeting, knowing that from this meeting there comes a greater sense of what Newport Beach is as a community, and how it is led, and how it invokes that sense of patience and purpose and the presence of peace. So I know that this meeting is a complete success, that every aspect of every person here is, is succeeding in what they have to say and what they're doing and what they're doing here today. So I say thank you, God, for that truth, and as I let go of this word, know it is the truth. I declare this meeting as not only a complete success, but serves this community well, and so it is. Amen.
Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn your cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Mr. Piattar. Excuse me, Mr. Petros, pardon me. I was looking right at you.
I have none.
Mr. Curry.
I understand the issue of coyotes is going to come back to the city council here at the next meeting or so. I'd like to make sure that we have plenty of opportunity, this is, this issue's getting more involved in the Newport coast, and we need to make sure that we have a very robust strategy for mitigating the coyote issue there that is perhaps more aggressive than we may have contemplated in the past. And I want to make sure that the community has plenty of opportunity to input into this as we develop the coyote management plan.
Thank you. Mr. Saj.
I have none.
Mr. Piattar. Mr. Duffield. Mayor Protem Muldoon.
Yeah, just as announcements, after I returned from my honeymoon, I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which is a quite different contrast and experience. And at that conference, I learned more about best practices for cities and how technology's being utilized specifically in San Francisco, which is on the cusp of some really exciting things with telecommunications, and had opportunity to meet a lot of people who are impressed with Newport Beach and think it's a great place to visit.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. First item, we are going to bring item number 20, the mooring fare market rent matter, forward immediately after we deal with the consent calendar, should be approximately 7:30. Number two, I would like to request staff to prepare a report for the next meeting, February 9th, on the OCTA proposals to revise the bus routes into and out of Newport Beach and prepare the necessary communication to the OCTA Board of Directors prior to their meeting, at which time they will be reviewing bus route issue in late February. So if we could agendize this for February 9th. Next item, I'd like to request staff to add to the February 9th agenda for council approval to televise twice monthly meetings of the planning commission. And number four, I want to announce a community forum that is going to be held on February 25th called Women in Newport Networking is a new forum designed to encourage Newport Beach women to become engaged in and serve as leaders of our local community and civic organizations. The city and 15 other community groups will provide information about their organization's missions and volunteer opportunities. Attendees will include current and former community leaders, Newport Beach community leaders, and the forum is open to anyone, free of charge, interested in learning more about how they can serve their community. And the win forum, Women in Newport Networking, is free and will be held on Thursday, February 25th, 5:30 to 7:30 in the community room across the way. And there is an RSVP link on the, on the screen, and the meeting announcement is on our website. And finally, I want to thank residents and staff for their participation and support of our council planning session at Marina Park last Saturday. The attendance was abundant, and the presentations were substantive, and I believe we have a good framework to work from going forward in 2016. I thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 17. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed, listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any comments? Are there any comments from the council? Items to be removed. Mr. Pieter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remove 5, 6, and 10, please.
Mr. Duffield? Mr. Petros? Mr. Currie? Mr. Solich?
No items.
I have no items. Mayor Protem?
I just have to recuse myself on item 1, the minutes for the last meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Move the balance consent calendar, items 1 through 17. With exception for items 5, 6, and 10, they're going to be pulled per Councilmember Pieter and recuse myself on item number 1.
Just briefly, there's a separate resolution that was distributed for item number 17. If we could incorporate that into the motion, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, and amend the motion if possible to reflect the new staff reports submitted on item number 17.
Okay, all.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2015-34.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Public comments.
Mayor Dixon and members of the City Council, with respect to the consent calendar, I wanted to call your attention and the public to item number 8, in which you're being asked to approve some project drawings and specifications. Whatever it is that you may be approving, the project drawings and specifications, to the best of my knowledge, they're not in the staff report, and I didn't see anything in the lobby, so I really do not know for sure what you are approving. Thank you.
Is there any clarification on that?
The plans and specs are typically available at the Public Works counter, and these projects are publicly bid and advertised, and I believe there's a set for the council right around the corner on the council's table.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the consent calendar? All right, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, ordinance number 2015-34, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending chapter 14.17 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code in its entirety pertaining to regulations required for water-efficient landscaping. Mayor Protem Muldoon? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk?
Public comments on non-agenda items. Are you going to item 20? Oh, I'm sorry, item 5. Items polled.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I pulled these items because I wanted to make a short statement. The city has done a really good job with their personnel and union agreements, and they've, to the union's credit and to the employees' credit, they've stepped up and they are paying a large percentage of their own pension, if not the largest in the county close to it. And for that reason, I'm in support of these agreements, but these are all still defined benefit pensions that they're receiving, even though the new employees, the new hires, are at a much lower scale. You're not going to feel the effects of those until 20 years later. And as we saw or heard in our Saturday discussion at our planning meeting at Marina Park, the city has still about a $253 million unfunded liability on our pensions. And what isn't realized yet, but what came out at that meeting, is that CalPERS lost or they didn't have as much of a return on their investment portfolio for the year ending 215 as they anticipated. They got somewhere around 2.5% return instead of 7.5% return, and that's going to net to the city, which we won't know for another 10 months, but probably somewhere in the $30 to $50 million additional unfunded pension liabilities. And for those of you that have read the paper this weekend, you saw maybe Senator Morlock's editorial where he talked about how now we are starting to have to realize, per the new accounting standards for government, those unfunded pension liabilities in our balance statement. So now we're going to start showing that, in this case, $253 million deficit or unfunded pension liability. And it's not a pretty sight. I think that this problem still is an untenable problem. We are doing what we can under the law and what CalPERS allows us to do, but we still have a long way to go. So I just wanted, A, to commend both our unions for working with us and the council up here in their negotiation, but realize there's still more pain to come and more solutions are going to have to be found because it's still an untenable solution. More likely, we're going to end up with a 401K-defined contribution plan, but we're not there yet. CalPERS doesn't allow it, nor does Sacramento allow it. So with that, I would move the approval of 5, 6, and 10.
Shall we vote? Public comment? Thank you. Maybe we have some comment from the public on 5, 6, or 10. No comment? Bring it back to council.
Even though it states that that's number 5, your motion or your vote will be for The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Madam Clerk? Public comments on non-agenda 9? Oh, we're going to go right into the number 20. Why don't we, I think we were going to do public comments on non-agenda items, and then we'll go into 20.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. No comments? All right. Oral reports from City Council? Assistant gentleman speaking? Yes, we'll do oral reports. We're still ahead of the 7:30 time. Oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. Pieter? Mr. Duffield? Mr. Petros? Mr. Currie? Mr. Solich?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Muldoon? All right, and I have none. All right, let's move up to item number 20, public hearings on setting the fair market value rent for moorings located upon tidelands in Newport Harbor. Staff, do we have a report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Chris Miller and Michael Torres are here to give a report on this item to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Chris Miller, harbor manager, and I'm with Michael Torres, Assistant City Attorney. And I'll just give a brief background of why we're here this evening. Back in June, the City Council held a special meeting to talk about moorings and the recommendations of the Harbor Commission, who worked very collaboratively with the Newport Mooring Association. We want to thank those members, especially those folks who made the effort to be there back then and through those meetings, as well as this evening. So thank you for your work. During the past six months, we were waiting for a response from the State Lands Commission, and we received that response back in December. And they asked a couple of things of us. One was to support a proposed rate change and also to make it very clear on the permit that there is no underlying ownership of the tidelands, and we have pledged to do that in our next version of the permit, just to make it clear that it's just a permit and we're not conveying any right, any more than just the annual permit for mooring. During the holiday break, we hired Jim Netzer and Associates to update an appraisal that he did about 10 years ago or so, and we have reviewed that, and that was an attachment to the staff report. Subsequently, the State Lands Commission provided comments to the City Council yesterday in a letter commenting on that updated appraisal. And then this afternoon, we distributed a letter from Mr. Netzer that addresses each of the comments that were provided from the state lands. So it addresses them point by point, and that's an attachment or a handout that you have in your possession now. With that said, Mr. Netzer is in the audience, and I would like to invite him up here to speak to the council, to go through the points in summary that he addressed in his letter to the City Council, addressing the points that the State Lands Commission rose. Mr. Netzer in the audience?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jim Netzer. I am a professional real estate appraiser. I grew up in Newport Beach and have been appraising tidelands properties since the mid-1990s, when I was first retained by the county to appraise some of the properties they administer around Harbor Island. In the ensuing years, I've completed appraisals for the county down in Dana Point. I've worked with the Port of San Diego, also with some of their tenants when they were negotiating leases. Last year, I did the appraisal for the City of Long Beach. They, as one of their conditions of approval for their Naples Island seawall replacement, they were asked to estimate the fair market rent of the tidelands there. I completed that appraisal for the City of Long Beach and the Coastal Commission. So I have a lot of experience in the tidelands. I did, I grew up here, and I truly did the best job I could, and I do take my job seriously. So I received a letter from, or Chris received a letter from the State Lands Commission yesterday. I reviewed it, and I believe you all have a copy of the letter. Most of the points in the letter address issues that are more, why didn't you include more boilerplate and more explanation? And the focus of my report was putting in good market data, doing good analysis, and not fluffing it up with a lot of boilerplate. The letter that they sent wouldn't change my opinions. There was one section where they asked about why I didn't make an adjustment for duffy's or for dinghy storage in the, in one of the approaches, and in retrospect, I probably should have done that. It was a method where you measure the rent for the tidelands relative to the size of a typical mooring and convert that into a rent per linear foot for a mooring. That's the most hypothetical of the three approaches, and adding that adjustment for a dinghy or for dinghy storage would not have changed my opinions at all. So if you have any questions about my report or my response to the state lands, I'm open to those.
Chris, did you have any more comments on your staff report?
The only other comment I would state is reiterating the findings of Mr. Netzer, which state that for an offshore mooring, his range that he determined for fair market value would be between $32 and $38. And then for an offshore mooring, it would be half that rate.
That's 32 to 38 per linear foot of mooring.
Yes. All right, any questions up here on the dais?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Thank you. Give me your name, Mr. Netzer.
Good evening.
Does your statement about the dinghy storage issue change your analysis for the harbor?
No, it doesn't.
And were you aware that that's not part of the staff report or that's not what's being considered today for the sake of rates?
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, the, the other comparables, like in San Diego, where they have moorings, they provide free dinghy storage to go along with your mooring. So I looked at the cost of storing a dinghy around Newport Harbor, and that has to be taken into consideration in the three approaches or the four approaches. So I wasn't trying to measure what you should be renting dinghy storage for, but I was looking at that as a component of what a potential mooring, someone renting a mooring would take into consideration and what they could pay in rent.
Okay, and so that's why you included it? That makes sense.
Yes, that's correct.
Do you look at other jurisdictions that also are within the purview of the State Lands Commission?
It's my understanding that most of the coastal tidelands are under, there's some kind of an agreement between the coastal or between the State Lands Commission and the municipality that administers the tidelands.
So yes, because Long Beach and San Diego and?
Yes.
How many jurisdictions did you look at? Do you recall?
Well, I looked at the Port of San Diego. I looked at, step back one, is San Diego is the only harbor that has moorings that are pleasure craft moorings. If you look at Morro Bay, Monterey, Port San Luis Rey, their moorings are more for a commercial fisherman, and their marinas are more of a commercial-type marina than a pleasure harbor. So I did look at all those marinas, but I didn't think they were applicable to the rental rates in Newport Harbor.
So you think San Diego is the most analogous?
Yes.
And based on your expert opinion, did you come up to the numbers that you provided here today?
Yes, I did.
Okay. When you read this letter that was provided by the State Lands Commission and provided your responses, did you feel that you were able to adequately answer these responses? You had enough time, enough knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pieter?
And all these different appraisals that you've done for the tidelands-type harbors and moorings, have you ever had state lands make comments on your appraisal before?
I'm working on an appraisal right now where they are being sued by a tidelands owner. I have not seen the comments from the state tidelands committee or tidelands, but I'm sure there will be comments on it.
So it's a third party who's taking?
Taking the State Lands Commission to court over a tidelands issue.
Okay, so but, so tidelands has never commented on any of your appraisals that you've done till date?
No, they haven't.
And even in that one, they're only commenting because they're involved?
Correct, and I have not seen the comments yet.
So this is fairly unusual to sit there and get comments back on an appraisal that you've done by state lands?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make it clear, bringing up the dinghy racks, just want to make sure we all understand that the lion's share of moorings out there, there is no dinghy rack storage available for most of the moorings.
That's correct.
Any other questions up here? All right, let's open it up for public discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Netzer? And how many out here are going to be speaking this evening? Why don't we make sure we gather ourselves so we move through this quickly? Yes, please. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, all council members. I'm Carter Ford, resident, mooring permittee, and community relations member of the Newport Mooring Association Board. And frankly, I'm more used to doing this extraprenensively than trying to read what I've written, but I thought I owed you trying to put it in writing. I've been asked with several others to speak on behalf of the Newport Mooring Association Board this evening. The board is composed of volunteers who are long-term voters. We are committed to serving this community and doing so professionally, thoroughly, factually based, with integrity and cooperatively and transparently. And to that end, we have a rather extensive and well-maintained website. So thank you, everyone, everyone, who has contributed to the effort that brings us here tonight. The Mooring Association Board is especially appreciative of the excellent relationship we now have with the Harbor Commission, the City Council, and the city staff. And key facts, tonight there is before the council a staff report recommending $35 per foot per year for offshore moorings, half that amount for onshore. It's supported by an MAI appraisal that concluded, as you've already heard, that the fair market rental for offshore moorings in Newport Harbor is in a range of 32 to 38, half that for onshore. And you also heard that the state lands has already weighed in again at the last moment after having had months to review the extensive quantity of documents and analysis provided to it. So frankly, we find that very disappointing action by the State Lands Commission. Now, they've also offered at least questions, if not some critique, of the appraisal you have, and they've asked for yet more information. We ask that the council decide tonight that enough is enough and choose to move forward. It's really bad for everyone as we see it, except maybe for someone who wants to delay and not get this done. and not get this done or maybe have the 2016 fees get stuck at what would be a high rate not to get this done tonight. So, we thank you for your efforts to get it done tonight. I need to try to speak to the audience a little bit, if I may, as well as all of you, to the mooring permit, mooring permittees and the Newport member, Newport Mooring Association members in the audience, many of whom have their own views of what fees they'd like to see. That however strongly one feels, what occurs, what occurs in life is the art of the possible. And frankly, in a democracy as we have here, that is what the leaders who we have elected can agree to vote for. We have fine leadership on the council and excellent supporting work by staff. That said, everybody in this audience should realize it's really not easy for governmental agencies to change fees for anything in a lower direction. You know, it's not an easy thing. So, as the NMA board sees it, and we had a lengthy meeting last week, may I finish a couple of sentences? Thank you. That what can happen tonight and that the, your NMA board unanimously supports is $35 per foot per year and $1,750 per foot per year for onshore moorings. That's, that's what can happen and considering how hard it's been to get to this point and how hard the council and staff have worked to make this possible and the damage and uncertainties from further delay, they deserve our heartfelt, our heartfelt support and we thank you for giving that. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Next.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Michael Lawler. I live on Balboa Island at 120 and a half Coral Avenue. Born and raised here in Newport Beach, a boat owner. I also have two moorings. One is an offshore mooring, D9 in the D Field on the north side of Balboa Island and then a shore mooring with a dinghy to get out to my mooring. I too want to echo Mr. Ford's conclusions here from the, from the Mooring Association. We urge the council to vote and approve something tonight. And I know the staff recommendation is at 35, however, the Harbor Commission's recommendation is at 25. And I urge the council to consider a $25 rate instead of a $35 rate for these reasons. The municipal code says that the Harbor Commission is charged and empowered to deal with matters concerning mooring permits and leases. It gives the Harbor Commission the power to set the fees and the Harbor Commission, after much debate, lengthy public hearings and discussion, came up with their, their price, the fair market value being at $25 a foot. And I don't think this council should ignore their own Harbor Commission. Councilman Duffield, you, if anybody, should know what it's like to have a Harbor Commission recommendation ignored by the city council. Also, in the appraisal, Mr. Netzer calls out for a CPI or a consumer price index of a range from $26 to $32 a foot with an average of 29. That's, that's one way of looking at it and I think that the council can consider a CPI increase. Also, in the appraisal, the Tideland's approach is at $26 a foot. So, please don't ignore those other figures that are in your own materials in the appraisal that the staff is recommending that you consider. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ross McElfrish. I'm also a resident of Newport Beach and a mooring leaseholder. I've been sailing in the city since 1958. And I wanted to get just back to real basic if I could and maybe you could help me with a clarification. In February, when the, when the dock owners received their relief from the city and some rates were rolled back, was from what my understanding was, it was determined that the, the used space on the dock or the space next to the dock was not able to be rented, but only the, the structure of the dock itself because the water was public space. Is that correct? Yes, no?
Yes, I believe so. Chris, do you want to answer that?
Well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask it is because we are tying our boats between two mooring balls that we own, all the ground tackle. And really, the only thing the city is responsible for is the weight on the bottom. So, I'm wondering what basically it is that we are responsible for, paying for if we can't rent the water space? That's my question.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have an answer? Since we can't rent it to the dock owners, can we, can we rent it, the water space to?
We'll wait till we get through if we have other questions. We'll try to put all those together. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Don Betenza from Mooring C31 for a long time. I just want to say from this side of the fence as constituents, it seems very easy for our representatives to raise taxes, raise rates. They never seem to go back down. To do that takes a lot of guts and courage. I believe you have that and I hope you make that decision tonight. The lower rate would be great, but anything to correct what was done a couple of years ago would be welcome.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Dixon, council members. My name is Patricia Newton. I'm a mooring permittee and a representative of the Newport Mooring Association. We'd like to thank the council for reconsidering the current mooring fee structure. I will be brief. I would like to respectfully remind council that it's not in the interest of the Tideland's trust to set fees based on local interests and affairs. The current over-market fee at $55 per linear foot are not an appropriate solution for harbor budget concerns. Significantly, it was a unanimous determination by both Harbor Commission and the council that the fees be revised. It's time to revise the fees downward to a more reasonable level. We request the council to adopt the fee resolution tonight as recommended by staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Behan. I have a mooring. I'm junior staff commenter, South Shore Yacht Club and a member of the NMA. I've been close enough to the Tideland, Tideland's use analysis that NMA has previously presented to the Harbor Commission and to the council to know that $25.43 a foot is legitimate, consistent with alternate methods of valuation and was based on a footprint that's favorable to the Tideland's, not to the boaters. In other words, we can see that the boat, the mooring fields take up more space than simply the measurement of the hulls of the boats themselves that make up the mooring While I know that that $25.43 is logical because I worked on it, I also know that that $35 a foot that we're asking for is at the high end of what I consider a very fair resolution of this matter. It is a significant rollback of the current fees. And that's particularly true in light of the need to assure the public that fair value is being given them for the use of a public asset. The NMA understands that. But they also need to make sure that these fees are affordable for the average local citizen and I don't think the current fees really are. We do occupy a Tideland's footprint and we're happy to pay a fair rate for its use. Also, I respect and appreciate the hard work and fair play of the Harbor Commission and the council in coming to this fee of $35 a foot. It's fair and a product, in my opinion, of the best kind of politics, respectful, thoughtful, and consensual. $35 a foot is a win-win on the high side perhaps, but affordable for boaters and fair to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Wolcott. I am here as a member of the Newport Mooring Association and I am here to ask you to pass the resolution that is before you this evening. But first, I'd like to address the letter that you received yesterday from the state lands commission. Last June, we were all here. We had another hearing. You heard extensive testimony and evidence from members of the boating public as well as from staff and as well as from Harbor Commission representatives, which gave the reasons and the facts for why they supported lowering the mooring rates. You found this evidence to be sufficient. You appeared to find it sufficient to draw a conclusion that you would vote for lowering the mooring rate to $35 a square, a linear foot that night. However, you held off on that because at the day of the hearing, the state lands commission sent you a letter asking you to delay so that they could review this matter and weigh in. That was seven months ago. During that period, the city staff and this council has done their job. You obtained an appraisal. The facts in the appraisal support the decision that you lower the mooring fees to $35 a square foot or lower. And once again, the state lands commission weighs in at the 11th hour, asking you to delay. Again, you have already delayed. The state lands commission has had ample opportunity to weigh in, to give their opinions. They have had a chance to develop facts that would refute the facts that you have seen in support of lowering the fees. And at this point, I believe that you have enough evidence before you to make a decision in favor of lowering the fees tonight. I would urge you to pass the resolution this evening to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that will lower the fees. And if you find it appropriate, ask the appraiser to prepare a supplemental, supplemental information packet that addresses the, the issues raised by state lands. Finally, after two hearings, extensive public testimony, facts set before you, reams of correspondence, very hard work on behalf of the, by the Harbor Commission, you have more than enough evidence in your administrative record to support lowering the fees tonight. It would not be an abuse of discretion to vote to go forward with fee lowering this evening. I would argue it would be a greater abuse of discretion to continue to overcharge for moorings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Brian Ozonyan, blessed to have a dock and a mooring. You received my packet about four or five days ago. I was fortunate to meet with two of you. You were willing to meet with me because let's go back last year when I attended four Harbor Commission meetings and pushed a price per square foot for moorings rather than the current fee structure. And it all obviously went the other way and that night of June 16th, we saw the state lands commission letter drop upon us and there was a lot of gee, question marks. After that meeting, I took it upon myself to start calling the state lands commission. And by the way, that Larry was, that letter was from Sherri Pemberton. So, I made my way just with a cold call, starting with the first call. You have my log, my chicken scratch log of maybe 10, 12 calls all around the state lands commission. And I finally got an email from a woman, state lands commission, who gave me a chart. She also gave me a map. She gave me a lot of information. You have the map, you have the chart and because I was puzzled that we had dock surveys from 1992, 2005, 2011. And my question was, do you have mooring surveys of the same? Dock surveys don't help us. We want mooring surveys. And Mrs. or Ms. Pemberton replied that it's 33 cents a foot. 33 cents a square foot. And that may be shocking to a lot of people, but it's not shocking to me because as you'll note in my packet, I have a little crude drawing that shows what I pay. I'll just, you already have it, but I'll hold it up for the audience. For my dock, I pay 50 cents a foot. For my mooring, I pay $10 a square foot. There's disparity in that. And all during the dock problem and rental rates or the dock tax, if you will, mooring holders said, we want consideration. So, how is it that I'm paying $2,000 for a mooring per year and paying $101 for a dock? How is it that Sherri Pemberton, the same person that gave that letter to this council in June, on June the 16th, I believe, now tells me it's 33 cents and no other discussion is there? Now, I know this is kind of baffling. You have this information. It's quite shocking because we have a politically negotiated amount here at 35. And I think that's great to have a reduction, but I have pretty good information right from the same person who grilled us before. Now, I think this takes some investigation. So, my proposal is that you waive the 2016 mooring bill. Just waive it outright because there are some credits due and you take this up further and investigate it. How do I get this information from a cold call? I didn't represent anybody. I'm just an activist. I'm just a citizen. I'm a mooring holder. I'm part of the NMA. And if I can get it, it deserves some further thought because if we're going to spend 33 cents a foot, that sounds pretty good compared for having to get to your mooring, service your, your vessel, you know, stock it full of water and food and have fun on it. And I think that's the original intent of the mooring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Carlin. I want to thank the council, the mayor, the Harbor Commission in particular for this long process. I'm a mooring owner. I've been invited by the Mooring Association to say a few words. I authored the comparable report last year that was given to the Harbor Commission. I hope they took that into account. And I'm very familiar with the process of trying to figure out how to value these doggone things we call moorings. I would like to thank Mr. Netzer for frankly, a monumental task of trying to go through a mountain of data. This is not like valuing a track home. It's, it's very complicated. Mr. Netzer has done a wonderful job. I think he has built on the approach that I took and he's put a number of different methodologies together, all of which point in the same direction, that an appropriate fee would be in that range of the 35, 32 to 38 dollars a foot. He even included the Tideland's approach, which of course, Mr. Behan has spoken to. And the Tideland approach is basically a square foot approach. The difference is that, just quickly, a dock is on the edge of the Tideland's. The mooring field as a whole, not an individual mooring, does interfere with the use of the harbor in a larger way. So, it's not just the shadow of the boat. It's the area around it. Said simply, you don't run a sailboat race through a mooring field. You don't zigzag through the different moorings. So, if we take the fundamental approaches, the most important of which is the comparative approach, we're right there. And I would support Mr. Netzer's report. I would thank him for the difficulty and the methodology because the methodology that he's employed will be able to be used in the years to come. I have not fact-checked every assumption, of course, but the ones that I've gotten to so far all, all bear out. But the methodology is the important thing and I think that the, the city staff and Mr. Netzer have done one heck of a job in, in giving us the roadmap that can be used in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Seitz. I've been a resident of the city for almost 40 years. I have a mooring. I have a dredging business in the harbor. I took the opportunity to talk to Ms. Pemberton today and I asked her why the last minute letters. And she said, well, we, we had some, some questions about the appraisal. And so I took the opportunity to explain to her how we got to $57, nearly $57 a foot. And she was extremely interested in hearing that information. And for you that are new to the council, it was done through, we, we were originally promised an appraisal, an RFP, and then it changed into a harbor fee ad hoc committee on harbor fee study and an in-house appraisal. And an in-house appraisal meant that it was done in-house by one person. And that is how we got to $57 a foot. So, she was very interested to hear about how that process took place. She didn't make any comments, but she did say that they were very interested and, and they would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, please?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are you prepared for a motion then?
Yes, I am.
I would like to move the staff recommendation to roll back the fee to a $35 per linear foot, half that amount for an onshore mooring.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's have discussion. Do we have any comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are you prepared for a motion, then?
Yes, I am.
I would like to move the staff recommendation to roll back the fee to a $35 per linear foot, half that amount for an onshore mooring.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's have discussion. Oh, Mr. Selich, pardon me.
Thank you. I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to move that we respect the request of the State Lands Commission, who is our landlord. We are the tenants in the tidelands, and that we not take any action this evening until they've had a chance to review the appraisal and Mr. Netzer's responses to the appraisal.
We have discussion. Mr. Piattar?
I don't have any discussion on the substitute motion.
Any discussion on the substitute motion? Mr. Curry?
Well, I fully appreciate how we all would like the fees to be low. And it's on the council historically who allowed these fees to stay pretty much where they were for 20 years without adjusting them, that made the increase as high and as impactful as it was to all of the various mooring holders in the community. And one of the things we should learn from that is we should not wait so long before adjusting rates accordingly for the cost of service. And while I appreciate that everybody here, I'm sure, is a Newport Beach resident, in fact, 60% of the mooring holders actually live outside of our community. So this is a $500,000 annual budget cut, revenue cut, to the city at a time when we need the tidelands funds to pay for what is estimated to be between $20 million and $60 million of seawall improvements and other improvements in the harbor that are desperately needed and really cannot any longer be avoided. So the mayor put forward Saturday her objective of maintaining fiscal strength and security. Fiscal strength and security is not cutting the major revenue source that pays for a very needed and currently unfunded capital project that's in the harbor. So we should think strongly about that. But I'm also concerned that the State Lands Commission has followed this. And people say, well, why did they wait till the last minute? I will just point out, Mr. Netzer's appraisal is dated January 6th. So they responded something on the order of, what, 19 days after it was published? So they are following this very carefully. And we put ourselves at risk. It's be careful what you wish for, be careful what you ask for. Because we're now at risk of the State Lands Commission coming in and taking jurisdiction and setting fees in a way that nobody, I think, in this room would like. So I think Mr. Selich's motion to wait, to work through this methodically, is a very appropriate one.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Sykes.
I've been a resident of the city for almost 40 years. I have a mooring. I have a dredging business in the harbor. I took the opportunity to talk to Ms. Pemberton today. And I asked her why the last-minute letters. And she said, well, we had some questions about the appraisal. And so I took the opportunity to explain to her how we got to $57, nearly $57 a foot. And she was extremely interested in hearing that information. And for you that are new to the council, it was done through, we were originally promised an appraisal, an RFP, and then it changed into a harbor fee ad hoc committee on harbor fee study and an in-house appraisal. And an in-house appraisal meant that it was done in-house by one person. And that is how we got to $57 a foot. So she was very interested to hear about how that process took place. She didn't make any comments, but she did say that they were very interested and they would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, please?
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Gary Hill. I'm a mooring holder here in Newport Beach. I just want to thank you guys and the Harbor Commission for all their hard work and for considering rolling back the fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Sykes. I've been a resident of the city for almost 40 years. I have a mooring. I have a dredging business in the harbor. I took the opportunity to talk to Ms. Pemberton today. And I asked her why the last-minute letters. And she said, well, we had some questions about the appraisal. And so I took the opportunity to explain to her how we got to $57, nearly $57 a foot. And she was extremely interested in hearing that information. And for you that are new to the council, it was done through, we were originally promised an appraisal, an RFP, and then it changed into a harbor fee ad hoc committee on harbor fee study and an in-house appraisal. And an in-house appraisal meant that it was done in-house by one person. And that is how we got to $57 a foot. So she was very interested to hear about how that process took place. She didn't make any comments, but she did say that they were very interested and they would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, please?
I don't have any discussion on the substitute motion.
Any discussion on the substitute motion? Mr. Curry?
Well, I fully appreciate how we all would like the fees to be low. And it's on the council historically who allowed these fees to stay pretty much where they were for 20 years without adjusting them, that made the increase as high and as impactful as it was to all of the various mooring holders in the community. And one of the things we should learn from that is we should not wait so long before adjusting rates accordingly for the cost of service. And while I appreciate that everybody here, I'm sure, is a Newport Beach resident, in fact, 60% of the mooring holders actually live outside of our community. So this is a $500,000 annual budget cut, revenue cut, to the city at a time when we need the tidelands funds to pay for what is estimated to be between $20 million and $60 million of seawall improvements and other improvements in the harbor that are desperately needed and really cannot any longer be avoided. So the mayor put forward Saturday her objective of maintaining fiscal strength and security. Fiscal strength and security is not cutting the major revenue source that pays for a very needed and currently unfunded capital project that's in the harbor. So we should think strongly about that. But I'm also concerned that the State Lands Commission has followed this. And people say, well, why did they wait till the last minute? I will just point out, Mr. Netzer's appraisal is dated January 6th. So they responded something on the order of, what, 19 days after it was published? So they are following this very carefully. And we put ourselves at risk. It's be careful what you wish for, be careful what you ask for. Because we're now at risk of the State Lands Commission coming in and taking jurisdiction and setting fees in a way that nobody, I think, in this room would like. So I think Mr. Selich's motion to wait, to work through this methodically, is a very appropriate one.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Sykes.
I've been a resident of the city for almost 40 years. I have a mooring. I have a dredging business in the harbor. I took the opportunity to talk to Ms. Pemberton today. And I asked her why the last-minute letters. And she said, well, we had some questions about the appraisal. And so I took the opportunity to explain to her how we got to $57, nearly $57 a foot. And she was extremely interested in hearing that information. And for you that are new to the council, it was done through, we were originally promised an appraisal, an RFP, and then it changed into a harbor fee ad hoc committee on harbor fee study and an in-house appraisal. And an in-house appraisal meant that it was done in-house by one person. And that is how we got to $57 a foot. So she was very interested to hear about how that process took place. She didn't make any comments, but she did say that they were very interested and they would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, please?
Well, I'd just like to remind Councilman Curry and Selich that with all due respect, this is akin to a type of slum lord, in my opinion. When I look at the moorings and what they offer, you don't go there to try to reap higher profits or monies, because the product that you're looking at is akin to a slum apartment. We're talking about no parking. Imagine on a July, on a weekend, and you're on, you live inland, and you want to use your boat, and it's off Balboa Island. I ask you, where are you going to park? Where are your friends who are going to come out with you on your boat going to park? Where is the dinghy storage? Where is the restroom? Where is the work dock? The water? I mean, this goes on. I can't imagine anybody on the peninsula, let's take a Saturday in July, I want to use my boat, there is no parking. There are no restrooms. There's, this is, was, they were put here 80 years ago when there was plenty of parking. And there was, it was easy to get on and off your boat with dinghies because you could put them anywhere you wanted to. You can't now. So until we make it a nicer product, like the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field that has a shoreboat, that has a work dock, that has a restroom, that has parking, then and only then can you justify raising the fee. So obviously, we can't provide that for the lion's share of the moorings that are out there. So they will continually be a poor product, if you will, in my opinion. And I think that at this point, we're lucky to get $35 a foot, in my opinion. And I applaud all those who worked on this. And I'm glad we're finally going to come to, hopefully, a resolve on this. Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Well, I, yep. My colleague, Mr. Duffield, raises the issue of them being sort of like slum property. And the one gentleman who spoke said, you know, it's the can, and it's the tackle, and then it's open water, that we've already decided belongs to the public. So what are we really paying for? I think people are forgetting the fact that this motion or this approach back in June also included the right to reaffirm the ability of people to basically sell to somebody else property that they don't own. In fact, the State Lands Commission made it clear in their letter, you don't own anything. But yet, if you can find somebody who'll pay $40,000 to you, you can sell it. That was, in fact, the most important thing to people, as we talked about the entire mooring fee deal. So they're getting pretty good prices, Mr. Duffield, for the so-called slum property. But it's a way that the mooring holders have of creating substantial wealth out of a public property, out of the utilization of public property that, in fact, they don't own. So I would just offer to you that that's part of the plan, too, as well.
Mr. Piattar?
Madam Mayor, can we hear from Michael Torres regarding the State Lands Commission's role in this?
Mr. Torres?
Councilmember Piattar, the State Lands Commission acts on behalf of the state in the management of tidelands. The city is a trustee of the state. So we actually have our own legislative bill given to the city where we actually operate as our own trustee, and we do that on behalf of the people of the state of California. The city council is charged with setting the fair market value rent for the moorings or for any other use in the harbor. That's not the State Lands Commission. They don't set the rate. The city council does. And in our discussions with the State Lands Commission, they've also acknowledged that it is the city council that does set the rent ultimately for the moorings here.
So if we set the rate at, say, 35, and they don't like it, what's their recourse?
Ultimately, if they found that the rate was somehow a violation of our Beacon Bay bill, our legislative grant from the state, they could have a whole, a hearing at the State Lands Commission where they would charge with some type of violation. We'd have a right to represent ourselves and refute any charges against us. But I don't think we're anywhere near that. In my conversations with them, they've never expressed that we're anywhere near that. Instead, they just see their role right now as trying to help the city find what fair market value is in any way they can. So they're trying to be helpful.
So they object, or they don't know if they object to our $35 a linear foot?
That's right, yeah. They absolutely have not said they object. Even in the letter they've sent to us, they haven't said they object. Instead, what they've done is raise questions regarding the appraisal. And from our discussions, I think they're raising those questions to help the city. They're trying to act as a peer to say, here are some questions we would ask, and maybe you should ask, to help us get to the right answer.
So there isn't anybody from State Lands here tonight? Okay. You had asked State Lands before, because they are actually the trustee for Huntington Harbor, and they have moorings there. Could they tell you what they charge for their moorings?
We've asked the State Lands Commission what they've charged for their moorings and what methods they use and what transfer fees. And at the time, they weren't able to give us an answer. They said they didn't know.
So they don't even know the answer to their own questions? Okay. I would suggest that we call the question, then. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you restate the substitute motion, please?
The substitute motion is to continue the item to allow the State Lands Commission time to review the appraisal.
Let's call for the vote.
With Mayor Dixon, Mayor Protem Muldoon, council members Duffield and Petros, the motion fails 2-5.
Okay, now let's go back to the original motion on the table. Do you want to, please restate that?
The original motion is to adopt the resolution, setting the fair market value rent for moorings located upon tidelands in Newport Harbor, effective for the mooring permits issued in 2016.
We have one question, Mr. Piattar?
I was wondering if the maker of the motion would entertain an amendment to eliminate the requirement for CPI adjustment annually and instead replace it with a city council review annually? No. I'd like to propose a substitute motion that would be the same, but we would eliminate the CPI and replace it with a council review. So in other words, the rent will not automatically go up. It will have to be raised by the council. But the council's duty would be to review it annually.
Do we have a second? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's call the vote, please, on the original motion.
With council members Curry and Selich voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
All right, let's continue on. Item number, I think we're item number 18, issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Uptown Newport Project. Do we, time for people to exit? Do we have a staff report?
We do. Dan will give that one.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The developers of the Uptown Newport Project...
Please exit quietly. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, the developers of the Uptown Newport Project are proposing the issuance of tax-exempt debt for the purpose of financing multifamily housing with revenue bonds. These do not constitute debt of the city, but a public hearing is required to comply with federal tax law to, since the development is in the jurisdiction of the city. So it's up to the council to approve this to move forward or not.
Okay.
Do you have any...
Do we have any questions up here, by members of the council?
Second.
Let's call the vote. Do I, excuse me, public comment? I always rush too fast. Do we have any comments from the public, please?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. That did go by kind of quickly, and I think it went kind of quickly through the Finance Committee when this was heard a week or two ago. It all sounds very innocuous. We're helping somebody out, pro-business and so forth. So one might wonder why we're having a hearing about this at all, why the public should be involved. I may not understand all the technicalities of this, but it looks like it's regarding the Uptown Newport Project. It looks like Mr. Shopoff, the developer, needs to borrow some money to make his development go forward. When you borrow money, you pay interest to some investors. In the normal scheme of things, the investors in a private enterprise have to pay tax on that. This is a scheme here where Mr. Shopoff is going to kind of turn into like a government agency, and people making investments with him don't have to pay any tax on the interest that he pays to them. What could be wrong with that? What's wrong with that is that, whether we like it or not, government costs money to run. And the money that pays for the government comes from taxes. And if somebody doesn't pay their fair share, the rest of us, the little people in the country, have to make up for the deficiency in tax. And I would much rather that Mr. Shopoff's investors paid their fair share of the interest than I have to pick up their share for them. I think there being, we have a very complex and largely corrupt tax system in this country. And I think the city is being asked to be complicit in a tax evasion scheme. And I don't think we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Let's bring it back. Any comments up here? Let's call the question. If you would, Madam Clerk, restate. Call the vote.
The motion is to adopt Resolution 2016-16, approving the issuance of the California statewide communities development authority. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number 19, adoption of the sewer rate adjustment. This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on protests or objections to the proposed sewer rate increase. All property owners who are opposed to the increase in the sewer rates must submit their protest in writing to the city clerk prior to the close of the public hearing. Would anyone care for a staff report? Yes, Mr. Murdock?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm George Murdock with Municipal Operations. If it pleases the council, I'll just be brief and give you some background on how we got here. As you know, the city hired the consulting services of HF&amp;H to conduct a sewer rate and recycled water rate study. We presented the recycled portion back in 2014, where council approved a reduction in the recycled rates. And then the consultant focused their energy on this sewer rates. The sewer rates are, the consultant looked at the expenditures and the revenues that are collected for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And these funds then pay for the operation, maintenance, and repair, for one thing, and
So after the, when we, we sent out the notices, the Proposition 218 procedure that council adopted, and it's a California constitution, it has a law that says that we need to allow a 45-day notice period. So that started essentially back after the October meeting, and it ends tonight on the 26th of January after we conduct a public hearing. The, move on to some of the other items. So the procedure that staff's recommending is that you would conduct a public hearing. Anybody that has a written protest, they receive the notice in the mail, should submit that to the city clerk by the end of the public hearing this evening. The City Council could then close the public hearing and then direct the city clerk to count the protests. So again, with Proposition 218, if we receive a majority of protests objecting to the rate increase, then City Council cannot raise the rates. In the absence of a majority protest, then the City Council could discuss the item and vote on the item, and then the last action would be, of course, a, to introduce the ordinance to change our municipal code. So that's really where we're at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later if you wanted to do the discussion after the public hearing.
Any comments from the council? Before we turn it over to a public hearing, I want to make a series of comments. We are at a unique time when we are currently looking at a significant general fund surplus caused by a strong local economy and by cost savings here in our city government. At the same time, we are looking at a sewer rate increase to fund a vital part of our infrastructure, and the proposed amount, which will be about $9 a month for the average homeowner by 2020, is significant for many. I understand the angst, I understand their many unfixed incomes, but I also understand how important it is to keep the enterprise fund that supports our wastewater system, to keep that solvent. Keeping up with our wastewater master plan is vital to protect our ocean and our beaches, and these waters are part of why our local economy is so robust. We could all imagine images of a broken sewer line spilling into our harbor, our beautiful harbor. So I would like to bring some of the general fund surplus back to the people and back to the residents who pay for the rate increase, if there is not a majority rate protest, and to reduce any hardship that this rate increase may bring to some people. This would be done by not directly supplementing the enterprise fund, but by offsetting the three years of the sewer rate increase with a one-time credit to reduce the overall municipal service bill for one specific month. For most residential sewer customers, and we are still refining this calculation, that comes to about $55 to $60 per home as a one-time credit. If this is adopted, it is a chance to share the surplus directly with the people and offset some of the needed cost of the sewer rate increase, and it's something that I think will be more meaningful to a household versus spreading it out over many months, and it's a direct public benefit. Frankly, this rate increase, one could argue, should have been passed in 2009 by the former council, and instead we're dealing with it now today in 2016. The council's wastewater master plan recommendation in 2009 recommended a rate increase, and since that time, we have not increased rates and the problems and the, well, I should say, the existing fund balances have continued to decline to a perilous situation. Of course, at the time in 2009, when the council sitting at that time did not raise the rates, it was the height of the Great Recession, and the rate increase was not acted on, perhaps understandably. So now we are playing catch-up. The need is still there. The rebate, as I proposed, is intended to smooth out the accelerated rate increase that has compressed into fewer years now, because we're playing catch-up in this reduced period. The budget surplus allows us to partially offset the rate increase to soften the impact on our residents, and there is precedent to this proposal as a public benefit action. It's been done by the council recently. I'd like to open up the public hearing, and my colleagues' thoughts on this as well are welcome. Unless dissuaded by public comment, I intend to make a motion to this effect once the public hearing is closed, and again, assuming there is not a majority protest. So let's open it up for public comment, please, if you would. How many people would like to speak, if you'd like to come forward? And please identify yourself and your property address.
My name is Bob McCaffrey. I live at 1410 North Bayfront on Valvol Island. Several of these comments will be directed to the past council. Nothing was done in 2005. Nothing was done in 2009, as you just mentioned, and now we're asked to take care of it. What the council did in 2009 is just kick it down the way, which they shouldn't have done. Meanwhile, the city built city halls, they built marina parks, and now they're thinking about another Taj Mahal. We'll call this Taj Mahal III. The city was not taking care of basics, infrastructure, which is far more important than shiny objects, including objects that are... You might note in the Daily Pilot, I took an ad out, a lot of you got emails on the subject. I think there's a lot of strong feeling in this city about not building the new center over on Superior, which the people in Costa Mesa will be using. I also have been told that a lot of people who use our existing library are not local Newport Beach residents. Madam Mayor, your comment last week about spend nothing more than is necessary, I agree with you 100 percent. I would recommend that you do not build the proposed center over on Superior, and that you find the money complete elsewhere. I recommend you go back to basics. I fully understand that spending other people's money is infectious. Don't do that.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder. This is the first I've heard of possibly taking part of the general funds and giving it, giving a partial refund or rebate back to the residents. As I'm just thinking this over, I can support the idea, but also if it isn't possible, even though I don't like to pay higher user fees, I think almost every resident I spoke to do understand that it is the obligation and responsibility of the council and us residents to pay the cost of upgrading our infrastructure. We don't want to have a sewer blowout, we don't want it going into the bay, so I would support the higher fees. I also agree with this last speaker, you should not build a community center on Superior. There was quite a bit of discussion and study, there was a site offered on Superior, it's a bad location, there's a lot of traffic there. The preferred site was at the end of 16th Street, kind of overlooking Banning Ranch. The majority of the residents came out, this room was full, so parted it. Any discussion about replacing H Infrastructure, Infrastructure or not providing services to the residents is kind of absurd. So anyways, sure, the concept of, I think, refunding to the residents, everybody participates, we all pay sewer taxes. It's a much better idea than refunding building permit fees to a few, select lucky few who chose to build at that particular window. So everybody participates, thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It may surprise you that even if I wanted to, I could not object to the rate increase because I do not happen to live in the sewer district to which the rate increase would be applied. I live in an area of Newport Beach that has no name that I'm aware of, but it's very much a part of Newport Beach, it's over the Back Bay. The sewers in my area went through, are part of, served by the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, who I mentioned to you at the study session. We went through the Proposition 218 exercise three years ago in 2013. Our sewer infrastructure where I live is bought and paid for. Despite one unfortunate accident a couple of years ago, the sewers there are well-maintained, and the rate, which actually you might be asking why the rate there is lower than the proposed one here, for a system of almost identically the same size and the same infrastructure, same pump stations and so forth. But the point is, I have already paid for my sewers. I may not understand your proposal, but the reason I cannot object to the rate increase is the reason I object to your proposal, if you're planning to rebate back from my general fund to Mr. McCaffrey and the other people on the Newport Beach sewer system. I don't see anybody from the other parts of Newport Beach wanting to subsidize me, and this may apply to Newport Coast as well, so I'm not sure why I should subsidize the others. I have a couple of other comments on the proposal, though. I have a minute left, I see. First of all, I'm not sure why we're going to the system for the people who are in this rate district of relegating the rates to a resolution and then somehow into the master fee schedule. When the water rates, which do apply to me, were changed in 2019, 2009, we incorporated those, and the table that's in the resolution simply went into the, into the ordinance. It's in the municipal code for the water rates. Everybody can see it, they can know how many years were approved, and we know when those years come to the end, we need a new Proposition 218 revision of the rates. It's very clear, very simple. In the master fee schedule, it's going to take more notes than it does now to explain where the rates come from, when they change, because the other rates don't change on January 1st, very complex. Other point I wanted to make to you, for the people who are in the district, whether they're getting a fair and equitable distribution of rates under the new plan, I see you do have the people who you don't know what their water usage is, and I'm wondering if there's any of those that are not served by Newport Water, that the staff expects actually have a very large water usage and therefore a very large sewer usage. If so, they're getting a heck of a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Barbara Stovkin, and I live in the Port Streets, and I've lived here for 42 years. And just what kind of disturbed me was that within four years, the water, sewer rates will be doubled, and my concern is, how often are we going to go through doubling of the rates for sewers? I do think that the infrastructure is very important, but I don't want to see in 19 or 2020 them asking for us to double the rates again the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? All written protests must have been received by the city clerk at this time, and after that time, there were no more written protests may be submitted. The public hearing and the 45-day notice period are now closed. At this time, the city clerk will tabulate the protests. Madam Clerk?
Honorable Mayor and council members, 27 protests have been received in opposition to the proposed sewer rate adjustment. 26 protests were received from property owners, and one protest was received from non-property owning customers. In absence of a majority of protests received in writing from the city's property owners, it is appropriate for the City Council to open a discussion and vote on the proposed sewer rate adjustment. Should a majority of the City Council support the sewer rate adjustment, an ordinance has been prepared for introduction.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring this back to the council. I will put forward a motion, as I indicated earlier, and I would ask that our vote be in two parts. First motion is to direct the staff to provide a one-time rebate to residential wastewater customers off their municipal services bill. The rebate amount would be roughly equal to three years incremental increase in the sewer rates, or up to about $1.5 million, again, paid for by the surplus. This rebate, however, would be contingent upon the approval of the resolution adopting the wastewater fee increase as proposed. That linkage is part of my motion.
So Madam Mayor, before that continues, that is referred to in this resolution, it looks like this, it's on the dais. So if you were adopting the mayor's motion, you'd be adopting this resolution to begin with.
I'll second the mayor's motion.
Yes, we distributed earlier today a resolution that deals with the rebate issue, so that should be up there for everyone to review.
Okay.
Just to call out the specific text, it's in Section 2, which is on Page 2, that's where the operative language of the rebate is.
Mr. Piatt?
Some clarifications. Mr. Murdock?
Water and sewer enterprise funds are separate, so we're really only talking sewer. We have a fixed and a variable. The fixed is supposed, of the fee that we're charging and we're proposing to increase. The fixed is really to cover the cost of the in-ground structure, and the variable is for the actual usage of the, of the facilities that we have. So far, so good?
Yes.
Do we have a connection fee also? So if somebody builds a new project?
Sure, for new connections, yeah.
And what is the connection fee supposed to cover?
That's, that's only the administrative cost to set up the account and, and to establish service.
So that's not paying for the capital cost of the sewer system that that guy's plugging into?
No.
That'll be covered under the fixed fee portion of his monthly bill?
Right, and that's done separately through a fee study, so we analyze what those actual costs are for staff to do it.
And the, part of the reason that we are now adjusting our fixed fee and substantially increasing it is a couple of things. One is, we never really had a good analysis of what the fixed costs were, so that when we did our 218 study, this is new. We basically started from ground zero. What is our fixed fee supposed to be, or should it be?
Well, in part. So if you recall, the Prop 218, it came, it went into effect in 1995, the Bighorn Decision in 2005, that said that sewer fees are property-related fees. In order for us to adjust those fees, we need to go through a comprehensive rate study that creates a basis for how, why you're charging the dollar amount for each meter or each service. So before, we had fairly flat fixed fee based on the size of the meter from small to big. The current structure is really an AWWA standard that says, you know, the person that has a bigger meter is using more water, so they're introduced more sewer into the system. So there's a basis to justify the charges. And some are going up, some are going down, and so if you look at what the current is, some of the bigger ones go down initially, and also, as I said earlier, we're rolling into that, that surcharge. We used to have a $10, if you had a 2-inch larger meter, you were charged $10 a month. Again, there's real no basis for that, so we rolled it into the fixed fee. It collected revenue for, yes, capital, but we adjusted it, so if you had a 2-inch meter, it's one charge, if you have an 8-inch meter, it's much larger, with the assumption that you'd use more water, so.
So, to summarize, when 218 went into effect, we had a fixed fee, we were grandfathered in and allowed to continue that charge, plus whatever, CPI or whatever, but the, the reality of it is, it really didn't have a good determination based on what the 218 rules are, as far as how we came up with it. So you're basically saying that we've come up with a system now, based on meter size?
Yeah, and I can't speak, I didn't do the rate increase that was done in 2005, which was where the last one we did. There was some, we did a, an analysis, and how in-depth that was, I don't know, and what the basis was. I do know, though, that since 2005, under Prop 218, that we do a much more comprehensive study and justification of those costs.
And part of that, and the reason that we have the fixed fee, is because in a case like now, when we have a drought and we're asking people to conserve, they're using less water, but they're still using the sewer system, and yet their fees that they're paying, which are based on their water usage, have gone down, so we're actually collecting less revenue, although the rates were, were lower, we're collecting less revenue, and now by increasing the rates, especially on the variable, but assigning some of it to the fixed, we're not necessarily increasing their bottom-line bill, even though the rate's gone up, because water usage has come down.
Yeah, I mean, it all plays in part with each other, because water usage, if somebody's using an awful lot of water and they have a smaller meter, then they're introducing a lot more sewer to the system, so that puts a bigger demand on the sewer. So it plays hand in hand. The fixed fee does play, pay for the capital replacement and our maintenance. Remember, we do an awful lot of maintenance. Remember, we do an awful lot of maintenance in the sewer activities to keep the sewer mains clean and that kind of thing, so.
So this is also, more or less, a reorganization of some of our fees between fixed and variable, and it takes into account things like lower water usage based on drought, things like that?
It does include that, and I would encourage folks to look at our rate, the full study, which is available on the web. The consultant talks about that and how they arranged it and what the basis was.
And then the other question I've got is on the rebate. So the rebate, as I understand it, and according to Section 2, they're going to get a one-time rebate effective when this increase goes into effect, or will it be? It says in the amount equal to each customer's share of the incremental increase. In other words, let's say that $55 number that you put out there, will they get a $55 credit month one, or do they get $2 a month to offset the?
It's a one-time.
The thought was to do it on one bill and maybe have more impact that way than $2 dribbled over three years.
So if your bill is only 27 bucks a month, you'll actually get a check?
You would get a credit for the next month's bill.
Okay, so you're not going to get money back, but you're going to show that $55 credit.
It will be parentheses at the bottom of the bill.
Until it gets used up.
That's correct.
And this will just come out of the general fund, or are we reducing the recycling fee? Because I know there was some discussion about that previously.
No, the concept, at least, I think that the mayor suggested was to take the general fund surplus of about, this is about $1.6 to $1.7 million, and apply it this way, all in one month. And I don't know whether that month's going to be March or April or May. We need to figure that out.
But not the recycling? We're not using?
It doesn't touch the recycling. So it's a one-time deal, it's not an ongoing deal?
Correct.
And you've calculated it to be, basically, to take away all of their excess fees for the first three years?
Correct. It's equivalent.
For residential customers, not commercial.
But in effect, well, they're going to get it all in one month, so it's not going to be at year three, all of a sudden they're going to get a surprise. It'll start going up immediately.
It would go up immediately.
Once their credit is used up.
Correct.
Well, I like the idea of giving money back to the taxpayers, especially since we've got a surplus. I don't like the fact that we're put into the situation of raising sewer fees when, frankly, they should have been raised in 2014 or earlier. But I understand the need for it, and I understand the calculations that you've come up with What I would like to see is this, I don't have a problem, if you had an ongoing offset with the general fund that would offset this, I'd be in support of it. But your offset ends, and you're given the benefit right up front.
It was to be the equivalent of about three years. I mean, I guess just the idea is to limit that for three years. Well, really, as I said in my comments, the compression of having to do this all to make up for lost time, to smooth it out, even it out, to make it less painful.
Understand. I just don't agree with it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm surprised by your proposal, because at our study session on Saturday, your first objective was fiscal restraint and responsibility. Yet here, out of the blue, we're proposing to take $1.7 million out of the general fund and just give it away. At Saturday's study session, you talked about the importance of having the Finance Committee as a tool to vet these various proposals that come before the city, and indeed, the Finance Committee in multiple meetings has vetted the increase in the sewer fee and has unanimously approved it and sent it forth to this body for approval. But this idea springs forth, apparently, from behind-the-scenes conversations in the last week or so, without any vetting, either, I suspect, from staff or certainly not from the Finance Committee. And then, I am concerned about the fact that we talked about the policy for how do we use the surpluses that we have. Last year, we had a policy, we've used half of it to pay for pre-funding pension obligations and half of it to fund one-time capital projects. And we talked about making that a permanent policy, or at least going back to the Finance Committee and having a permanent policy developed. But instead of doing that, now all of a sudden, we have a spending proposal for the surplus coming out of the blue, as we've had some other dubious spending proposals or fee-cut proposals over the course of the last year, in a way that is the opposite of fiscal responsibility. It is fiscally irresponsible to manage our finances in this way. Now, it's not clear when we give this money back, who it's going to go to, whether it goes to only people who pay the sewer fee. Is that the idea, Dave?
That's correct. Residential customers who are our sewer customers.
All right, so people in the Newport Coast, people who live in Jim's neighborhood, people who live in Santa Heights won't get the fee. They'll get a different fee from their sewer provider, but they won't get any benefit of this.
That's correct.
You know, and we have Mr. McCafferty here, who was there, and I hope everybody understands what they want to do. If you restrict the general fund enough, sooner or later, we're going to have to cancel capital programs. He mentioned the West Side Community Center Saturday. He mentioned the library and fire station in Corona del Mar. If you look at his newspaper ad, he doesn't like the art in the park. So the whole thing for these folks is to cut our capital budget, but it's the general fund. So 60% of that is public safety, police and fire, and sooner or later, we're going to have to start cutting that when we start cutting the general fund. Now, that's what's happening. We just gave away half a million dollars to the mooring holders. This is $1.7 million. We gave away $250,000 to the dock owners. We gave away $355,000 to the owners of Woody's Wharf. We're giving away money all the time here in the last year to various special interests. We're approaching $3 million now, and that's going to have an impact in years where we have a budget deficit that's going to weigh heavily on our public services, on our ability to maintain our services, and on our facilities. Now, when you take the sewer fund and you force it to run at a structural deficit because you subsidize it through the general fund, that's a structural deficit. Oftentimes in government, structural deficits are created through incompetence. Occasionally, they're created through malfeasance. But nobody, with the possible exception of Puerto Rico, creates one on purpose as an ongoing way of managing government. It's simply wrong to do, it's simply inept, and we shouldn't be doing it here. Now, everybody wants to, I guess, blame the past council for not raising rates in 2009. Well, bad on us. We were in the middle of the recession. We did a more complete study to find out how they might have better be done, but here we are today, ready to do it. So the answer is not, well, you didn't do it then, so we're not going to do it now. That's, I'm sure somebody here will say that before we're done today. What we need to do is to be responsible stewards. That's what being a leader is all about, and stepping up to difficult decisions, like the Finance Committee did, where you sit on it, because you know the numbers and you know the impact of what this is. Let's use our surplus in responsible ways for one-time expenditures on capital projects. And by the way, it's still, and we just made it worse with the previous vote on the mooring fees, we still have a $20 million hole and not a single strategy on how we're going to pay for that going forward. And yet, here we are, giving money away that we could use to pay for that. We simply have the cart in front of the horse and making bad policy decisions. So I will not be supporting this proposal.
Mayor Protem Muldoon.
Thank you. Mayor Dixon, I thought this was a really creative way to return something that actually belongs to the people back to the people. This money is not our money, it is your money. Do not ever accept anyone, whether it's federal government, local government, state government, foreign entities, local entities, doesn't matter. Don't let them tell you that it's their money, it's not your money. You have the power, we are merely stewards. So although I would not support a rate increase, it's my pleasure to return any money back to taxpayers and ratepayers. So I'm happy to support your idea. I think it's very creative, and I believe that it's better to give it to the ratepayer than to have it be wastefully spent by the city.
Mr. Selich.
Well, I concur with Councilmember Curry's comments. I think this is a terrible idea to go and co-mingle general fund money with enterprise fund money, just, it's totally irresponsible, and I just can't support it.
Mr. Piattar.
I think it's always fun when people get a new sense of morality and how they spend money. You know, it was okay to spend $2.2 million in giving back building permit rebates when Rush Hill was running for reelection. It was okay to spend $1 million trying to get rid of firewood in the fire rings. It was okay to spend $250,000 on our white bunnies, or $143 million on our Taj Mahal that we're sitting in, but doggone it, you give $55 back to our ratepayer, that's going to kill us. I call a question.
Could I just have an opinion from Mr. City Attorney or City Manager on the suggestion about the co-mingling of general fund and enterprise funds, please?
There's nothing illegal about having basically a rebate from the general fund to the enterprise fund. It's more of a policy decision of whether that's proper enough, there's not a legal issue there. While I have the mic, though, I'd like to just clarify the motion. It'll be done in two parts, and the first one is the motion for adoption of the resolution on a one-time rebate. The second portion of the motion is actually Items C and D, as well as the resolution adopting new sewer service and use and consumption rates. I just want to make sure everyone understood the motion before you voted.
Actually, I know that's, I don't think that's the mayor's intent. It's to vote separately on the resolution and the rebate, and then put the vote up on the board. Then, secondly, to have a second vote on, as you're saying, Mr. City Attorney, CD and the resolution, the other resolution, the second resolution that's before you.
That's correct. That's correct.
I thought that's what I saw, but if I misvoked.
You sound like it's all one motion.
No, no.
Two separate votes. All right. Mr. Piattar, did you have another comment? Your name is still up here. Pardon me? Oh, do I do that?
No, the clerk does.
All right, so, call for the vote, please.
And again, this is for the vote on the resolution regarding the one-time rebate.
Yes.
With Councilmembers Curry and Selich voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
All right, now we'll move to the next part of the motion. Is there a motion to adopt the staff recommendation for the wastewater rate increase?
Plus the resolution that's before you, the second resolution.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear. I'm glad Dave was able to correct me, but it's Items C and D of the staff's recommendation, as well as the resolution adopting new sewer service and use and consumption rates.
There a second?
A second.
Any comment?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would just say that the most nakedly irresponsible vote of all is for somebody to vote for the rebate and then not vote for the fee increase. So we'll see what happens.
Mr., well, Mr. Piattar, your name's still up here. Did you want to speak? No? All right, Mr. Muldoon.
I'm fully clothed, as you'll see right now, and it is my pleasure to vote in reigning in government by returning funds to the tax and ratepayers while also trying to reduce costs and keeps rates low. This is often done in the struggle that you'll see with some votes that are less maybe idealistic than others, but I don't see any conflict with giving money back to those who pay too much. In addition, finding a better way to spend the funds that we are holding.
Any other comments? All right, shall we go for the vote?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2016-1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Section 14.24.065 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to sewer use charges. The motion carries 4-3 with, let's see who that was, council members. Thank you. Councilmembers Muldoon, Duffield, and Piattar voting no.
All right, item number 21, Newport Boulevard widening from 30th Street to Vialito, award of contract. Staff, would you like to?
So Madam Mayor and councilmembers, we do have a presentation, if you'd like to hear one. The only reason this is on current business is because of the dollar amount.
Second.
We need to have a public comment. Yes, could any members of the public would like to speak, please?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. Regarding this agenda, Item 21, I'd like to echo my comment that I made previously about Item Number 8. I see before me City Council with comment from the public as being asked to approve the project plans and specifications. There is no hint in, it was good to learn that the public and the council can go to the Public Works Desk and see those. There was nothing in the staff report explaining where somebody diligently trying to prepare to comment to you at this meeting could see those plans. It's not explained here. I looked diligently in the lobby, I could find no plans or specifications. That's my comment on this item, and now if you'll indulge me, I have a point of order about the validity of the action that you just took, which has to do with why I kept going to the lobby to try to figure out what's going on here. I looked at the agenda, and as you know, I try to prepare for these meetings. When I came here at 5:00 this afternoon, I was surprised to see a resolution that has no number. Used to be that the clerk under our city charter had to read the titles of resolutions that were being adopted. I was surprised to see this, because I saw nothing on the agenda about a resolution being adopted. Then I heard that there was some other resolution, and I went up, that was not there at 5:00, finally found a copy of it. There is nothing whatsoever on this agenda that would alert the public that there was any discussion of a rebate, let alone the adoption of these two resolutions. That is my point of order. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other matter, comments from the public, please? All right, shall we call the question? Mr. Piattar, not?
He voted aye, as he. The motion carries, we're missing someone. Oh, he voted just one.
All right.
Hold on one moment, we're missing someone's vote. Councilmember Duffield? The motion carries 7-0.
All right. Item Number 22, amendment of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to approve and award official police tow contracts and approval of revised tow rate schedule. Staff, do we have?
So, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, you did spend a little while on this at study session two weeks ago, and I certainly hope folks appreciated that time. We don't have a detailed staff report, all of our experts are here. If you pass the recommended action, you would authorize a contract with two specific towing companies, G&amp;W and Metro Pro. You would also revise the rates, as discussed two weeks ago. And that would be at least A through D of your recommended actions by staff. We're here to answer any questions you might have, or see if you might want to propose a different path, because I know a little bit of that was discussed last time.
And just briefly, if I could just weigh in for a moment, we did distribute a revised ordinance this evening, which basically leaves the term of any agreement up to the council for determination. So that's there before you, as well as the fact that if you were going to change the term, the contract would also have to be changed to reflect whatever term we decide on.
Any comments? Any comments? Shall we take it to the public then, please? Any comments from the public?
My name is Roger McGregor, Owen McGregor Yacht Corporation. I have about five acres of property that surrounds Southside Towing. They've been my neighbors for about 20, 25 years, the people that run it now, and I'm here in some of support for them, as a character reference, so to speak. My office looks directly down on their operation. What I see is a well-managed, tidy, efficient, and secure operation, and the security thing's kind of important to me. That area of town gets a little rough sometime. They watch it, they tell the owners around them what's going on, they keep an eye on the things, and they run their thing very well. Tow yards can be sort of rowdy places. People get their car grabbed and they get a little upset, and they handle this drama with skill like I cannot believe. As I say, I'm a day-to-day witness of what goes on over there, and it's good. The, this is a very small thing, but to me, it tells a lot about their character. Some years back, the guy that runs the place now ran a contractor, and his bulldozer accidentally knocked down about 40 feet of my concrete block wall. Within two days, the thing was up without a word, no screaming, no yelling, which is kind of rare in this day and age. It says they're good for their word. At that rate, they're good guys, and I hope they get the contract.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Alex Mohammed. I work with Southside Towing. Two weeks ago, we talked about the space being an issue, and Mr. McGregor just spoke about available space that he has, and I do have a drafted lease in place to lease 6,000 square feet of his facility. We want to stress to you guys that, you know, we've been working on this contract for almost three years now. We've been really, really patient. We've obeyed by all the rules. It was a shock to me to find out, two weeks ago, that the city had allowed one of our vendors to lease to another vendor, one of our competitors, space. I mean, a little disheartening, kind of feel like I'm being I mean, a little disheartening, kind of feel like I'm being ganged up on. We just want to compete for the contract. We want to work hard for it. We've, we're, like Mr. McGregor said, we're very responsible. I think we do a good job for you guys. We would provide excellent response times, and the amount of equipment and staffing that we have, I think we do a really, really good job for you guys. We're asking if you guys would consider taking a look at the lease agreement and taking that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a question for you, Alex.
Absolutely.
What lease?
I have a lease in place with Mr. McGregor to lease a 6,000 extra square feet of his facility, of a facility next to his, our facility, actually. Mr. McGregor owns the property that we are currently on now, and he owns the neighboring property as well.
Oh, he just said you were a good neighbor. He didn't say anything about a lease. So, you've got a lease for 6,000 feet?
Correct.
And that brings you over the 44,000-foot minimum requirements?
Correct.
Can I ask a quick question of council? Is that okay to submit a lease after the RFPs have been submitted to show compliance? Well, I think there's a lot of issues we'd have to look at in that regard, and primarily, you know, is zoning appropriate? We haven't seen the lease agreement. My understanding is that they was determined not to be qualified based on the fact that they didn't have enough space, but I guess that's something if you wanted to continue, we could reopen and take a look at. I'm sure we'll discuss it more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I speak to you tonight as General Counsel for Southside Towing on this matter that's currently before you. Having served in your position before and dealt with RFPs on a number of occasions, I know it's not always an easy process. This process in particular posed some unique issues based on the fact that we didn't know before the study session that two of our competitors were essentially working together to allow one of our competitors, Metro Pro, to meet the requirements of the city ordinance. If we had been aware of that, we would have provided you with the lease that we currently have prior to tonight's date. We had that agreement in place a number of months ago, and we now not only comply with the city ordinance, but all the zoning requirements in order to compete for this RFP tonight. As I mentioned, I understand that it's a difficult process that you all go through. This has been a lengthy, three-year process. This is a good, strong company that would be a fantastic corporate partner for this city. They're anxious to do business with this city. They've worked long and hard to compete for your business. They should be offered every opportunity to compete fairly for your consideration, and that's what we're asking for this evening. They're in compliance, they seek your support and your help, and thank you so much for your consideration and your hard work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name once more is Jim Mosher, and as I read the agenda, I see that whichever two towing companies you choose as the contractors, you are being asked tonight to adopt a changed ordinance, and this time for a change. I did manage to get to the lobby and find the redlined copy before speaking, that I know what you're considering, and I wanted to direct your attention to that, because as I believe you know, when you introduce an ordinance, the language has to be correct, otherwise you have to go back to the first reading. This consists of three paragraphs. You'll see at the end of the first long paragraph where it says redlined copy, staff has, there's a, what's called an escalator clause about cost of living changes. Staff has thought it important to enter the words "not seasonally adjusted." That's underlined. On the final line, you've seen they've crossed out 1967, and they've replaced that with 1982 through 1984. All sounds good. I think before you adopt this, you should check that the language referring to the Los Angeles Long Beach Area Consumer Price Index is not some obsolete language that went with the 1967. I have reason to think that there is no longer a consumer price index for the Los Angeles Long Beach area, and this would not just be a typographical error, it's a matter of substance which consumer price index you want to have in here. I think that matter should be clarified so that you do the first reading properly. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sean Osterker, and I'm here to speak about something that Councilman Curry said at the last study session. He suggested that some councilmember's votes in regards to the tow contract issue might have been influenced by campaign contributions. I'm just wondering who exactly he was referring to. I find this peculiar, seeing that according to the Secretary of State's office, he accepted campaign contributions from Metro Pro in his last state assembly campaign. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jody Campbell, Metro Pro Road Services. I don't want to reiterate what I spoke last time. Obviously, your police department staff taking a lot of time to vet this RFP that's gone on for nearly two years. You know, from some 11th-hour misinformation, I just wanted to clarify. Within our original proposal and the subsequent two proposals, we identified three locations for storage. Of the three proposers, we have 197,000 square feet outside storage space that are within the three-mile city limits. It's in your summary that you've been provided today. To make a statement that, and having multiple locations in multiple cities, I can tell you the process for acquiring, towing, and impound facility isn't as simple as leasing some space next door. The CEP process, as you can imagine, for an impound yard is lengthy, and it just doesn't happen overnight. We are in multiple cities, we serve multiple police departments, we've served this city without question for 50 years. We'd like to continue that. Because of our multiple locations, we receive opportunities and notices for RFPs in many cities. One of the first things we do prior to submitting any RFP or response to an RFP is make sure we meet the minimum requires of the requirements of RFP. If we don't meet it, we don't submit one. We respect council's time, we respect staff's time, but that seems kind of straightforward. We urge you to follow your recommendation of your staff here tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Wayne Miller. I'm here for G&amp;W Towing this evening, and I ask for your consideration. I'm not a public speaker in general. I'm a tow truck driver, so that's what I really do as a living, so I will not be really efficient at this as other people have been. First, I'd really like to thank the police department, and as you all know, this process has been going on for three years, and the police department and the staff have spent a lot of time evaluating the proposals, and I think they've come to the correct collusion, or the correct conclusion. After I graduated from Newport Harbor High School a few years ago, I was working for my father at the Shell Station at West Cliff Shopping Center, and while I was pumping gas there, possibly for one or more of you or your parents, I came upon the conclusion that I wanted to pursue the towing field, and that led me moving the operation that we had at that little gas station at the time, which was two tow trucks. And back then, I looked at the city's requirements, and I didn't view the city's requirements as the ultimate, but as the minimum, and I've worked over the years to exceed those requirements in every way, and I can tell you honestly that we do, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, every day of the year. Let me see. Oh, I just want to remember what I was going to say. When I attended the study session a couple of weeks ago, there were three points that were brought up by Mr. Piattar, which I think were quite interesting and needed to be addressed. First of all, outside storage, the minimum requirement's 44,000 square feet. I exceed that pretty well, and there are still times when it's necessary to have 44,000 square feet, and I'll give you just some references. July the 4th can be a very busy day. Your police department, if I'm not mistaken, does not allow anyone to have the day off, and I know they bring in a lot of people from out of town to help on that day, and I know I'm maximum force on the days that, which includes, yes, I'm down there shuffling cars and taking care of customers. The other times I can think of that are really obvious, and especially recently, is Harbor Heritage Run. That morning, we realized the time would run by that fast.
And it goes fast. Could you just wrap up your comments, please?
I think the one thing that, other than answering all of Mr. Piattar's questions, the one thing that is the most important to us is that a minimum five-year term is really important to us, because we're facing some financial expenditures. We're going to be facing renewal of our mortgage with our, on our properties. We're going to be forced real soon into making some technology improvements that will benefit the city and us, and we're very focused on trying to work with the city to make all of those improvements.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next speaker, please. The nun? Let's bring it back up to the dais. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I believe in competition in RFPs. I think it's very important, otherwise you just have two people who qualify, and that's it, you're not going to consider anyone else. I also agree with you, Mr. Miller. I think your company does a fine job, and if it's important to have all of your space at peak hours, it's important that you not share it with anyone, and you have it exclusively for yourself. So, it's my desire to have a genuine competition, a real RFP process, and see if we can have three participants be eligible, so I'm asking my colleagues consider continuing this matter till next council meeting to see if, in fact, the group that has now a new lease is able to qualify. If they're not able to qualify, well, then there's no competition, but if they are, I would like there to be genuine competition. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Curry.
I'll remove the recommended staff action as it's contained in the binder and all of the appropriate actions along with it, including the term of five years, which is necessary for, no matter who wins, for the economics of the winner to be able to serve the city effectively. I think it's important to note that we've had an extensive RFP that has gone over several years, that our police department has gone through very rigorous and methodical analysis to bring us the recommendation that we have tonight, and that we are also, you know, this is a very important service to the city. It's also one where we've seen shrinking business, and so adding additional firms beyond two is really not economic in anybody's interest. So, you know, this is becoming Christmas in January. We're sort of tampering here with the process. To the young man who researched my campaign contributions, good job, young man. I think you'll find that the similar contributions around the table, I think I may have taken money over a course of five campaigns from everybody who's on, who's in the competition here tonight, but the difference is, is that I'm not trying to alter the work that the staff has done in order to get, to change that, to get a political choice. I think the staff did an excellent job in doing the analysis, and we should stick with the staff and go with what the police department has done in terms of the recommendation here for the ongoing services in our city.
Mr. Piattar.
I'm glad to speak, but I'll wait for a second. If there isn't going to be one, I'll speak.
No, I'll second it.
Okay, I'll propose a substitute motion. I propose that we accept Southside Towing and G&amp;W, and put a condition on Southside that they must meet the 44,000-foot minimum within 120 days, or it reverts to Metro Pro, and keep the five-year term.
There a second? You second? Any discussion?
Well, yep.
Mr. Curry.
I would just say that this is the grossest form of political manipulation to get your buddies into the deal. That's what's going on here tonight. We've seen it all night, and like I say, it's Christmas in January for the politically connected.
I do want to clarify that I haven't received money from any of the towing agencies, unlike Mr. Curry.
Oh, Mr. Muldoon?
Could you read back that?
So, just to clarify, Southside would replace Metro Pro as one of the two approved agency towing companies? I mean, the contract would be for five years, however, be terminated within 120 days in an award to Metro Pro if they can't prove they have enough space. And G&amp;W is part of that approval? Right, so all we're doing is replacing staff recommendation, Southside for Metro Pro, and giving them 120 days to show compliance with the 44,000-foot.
And, Mr. Piattar, clarifying that that also includes the resolutions involving the fee structure, correct? So, that's A through D, except for your notation about?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, who was the seconder of the motion? Thank you. I'm sorry, the substitute motion. Thank you.
Would you restate where we are then on the motion, please?
A substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Sure, there's a substitute motion that would approve the staff recommendation with this important substitution. That would be, Southside would replace Metro Pro, so G&amp;W and Southside would be offered contracts. In Southside's contract, they would have, they would both be five years. Southside's would have 120 days to prove that they have enough square footage in their yards to continue to qualify under the code. If they did not have that after 120 days, that contract would revert to Metro Pro. That's the motion.
May I ask a clarifying question? Was that the only reason that Southside was, had negative points against it because of their square footage?
There was some deduction taken just for experience with other municipalities. Southside is, has less than others, but it wasn't, the most significant one involved the yard, the yard storage area.
This is probably beginning overly technical, but, you know, in theory, they should have had the space on the date of the RFP, because that's when it was determined whether they're qualified or not qualified.
Would you entertain an alternative approach?
I'm open if you want.
Well, can we, should we vote on this, and then, and then, let's vote on this matter? Okay.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Or the substitute motion.
On the substitute motion.
With councilmembers Curry, Mayor Dixon, and Councilmember Petros voting no, the motion carries four-three.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
We are going to adjourn this evening in memorial to David Lee Parks, who passed away on January 8th, that is home in Corona Del Mar. David was born in 1952 to Wally and Mary Parks, and spent his childhood years as a resident of Rivera, now known as Pico Rivera, in LA County. Rivera, now known as Pico Rivera in LA County. In 1956, David and his brother Richard moved with their mother to a property she purchased on Heliotrope Avenue in Corona Del Mar. This would be David's home for the next six decades of his life. David attended Corona Del Mar Elementary School, Harborview School, and Corona Del Mar High School. He earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Cal Poly Pomona, and later returned to school and earned a Bachelor of Science degree in engineering technology. Throughout his professional career, David worked for a number of well-
Throughout his professional career, David worked for a number of well-known engineering companies, including FLUR, Jake Kim Engineers, McDonald Stevens Engineers, Levine Frick Engineers, and Arcadis, Arcadis. David and his wife Barbara married in 1982, and the couple designed and built a home on the rear of the Heliotrope property where David grew up. Together, they raised two daughters. In his spare time, David enjoyed a number of sports and hobbies, including badminton, water skiing, and playing basketball on Thursday evenings as a member of the city's Adult Basketball League. Car racing, however, was a large part of his life from an early age. David's father served as president of the Southern California Timing Association and founded the National Hot Rod Association. David shared his father's passion for the sport and spent many years racing, collecting, and working on cars. David is survived by his wife Barbara, daughter Tamara Parks, daughter and son-in-law Mary, and Matt Bell, brother Richard, extended family, and many, many friends. We stand adjourned.